Hi all, I'll call to order. Everybody here calls to order the January 24th meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. And I'll need my glasses to read this. It's gonna be forever. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. And tonight we'll have public section out here right now, but we will have two public comment periods. After the superintendent's report will be the first public comment and will limit it to three minutes per speaker for maximum thirty minutes, the way we've done in the past. And then towards the end, after the new business, the public will again have an opportunity to speak without the three-minute limit. Lynda, you want to do a roll call?
Ms. Cassell done?
Here.
Ms. Emma Rusty?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gowan? Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola? Ms. Prouse?
Here.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Here.
Mr. Woodward?
Yeah.
I think I saw Anne trying to get on. I don't know what happened, though.
She was on. She was on.
Computer crashed.
Yeah, I see her there.
Michelle will not be joining us. She had death in the family. Let's deal with that. Um, okay, we're going to recess to executive session. Be resolved. Be resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJ SA ten colon four dash twelve and thirteen. The Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss the superintendent's search, staff requests for pay minus cost of substitute, HIB, and student discipline. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJ SA ten colon four dash thirteen. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Do we have a motion to recess to executive session?
So moved.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Then we'll move to executive session. Christine, remind me how we're doing this technology?
Okay, so.
Meeting. This January twenty-fourth meeting of the Board of Education, we're going to reconvene to regular session. Do we need a motion or anything for that, or just?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion to reconvene.
You can move it. Carolyn, you can move it.
Oh, I move. I gotta write this part down. I moved to reconvene to regular session.
Second.
Second.
You can do a voice code for this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We start with the pledge of allegiance.
Let me get the flag up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on the agenda are communications. We received nineteen communications from December tenth through January nineteenth. Nothing to read through them all. I can maybe share some of the subject lines to get a sense of the, of what they were about. There was one on Bartle's playground. An update in middle school. A number of the communications were related to the remote option, to enacting it, to continuing it, the necessity of it. And some were in response to a message from the superintendent. And then we two were in relation to Martin Luther King Day participation. So thank you for all those communications. The approval of minutes, we have minutes in the agenda from the hybrid workshop and executive session for December sixth and December thirteenth. Do we, we move those now? Linda? Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes from December sixth and December thirteenth. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, you want to roll call on that one?
Is there any discussion before we take the roll call? Okay, I'll take the roll call. Ms. Cassell done?
Yes.
Ms. Emma Rusty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan? Ms. Gowan here? Did Ms. Gowan leave? Oh, no, she's there.
She's muted.
Ms. Gowan, you're muted?
She may be having tech trouble.
Maybe she's not there.
She may be having tech trouble again.
Okay. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. Prouse?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, and we move on to the student representative reports. Milo and Nina, you were both here. Who's starting?
Yeah, I'll be starting. So, starting with Irving, we have a couple announcements to make. First being that Global Play Day will be taking place on February second. And this day will pretty much offer students times to learn to play and explore new things and spend the entire day playing with their classmates to work on the twenty-first century skills. Also coming up is the next coffee with the principal, which will be also on February twenty-second, which will be at a seven PM Zoom call for anybody who would be wishing to join that as well. As well, as well as the end of the quarter rule is also coming up. So, report cards will be available through the Genesis portal on February eleventh for everybody who wants to take a look at those.
Yeah, so there's not too much going on for Bartle. Wednesday, January twenty-sixth, they also have a coffee with the principal, which will be on Zoom. Parents can join to discuss important topics. Now, the middle school has a little bit more going on. Like Milo said, the second marking period ends this Friday. And the second marking period students of the month will be rewarded with their second quarter awards breakfast on February eighth, and the students are Ruben Hirsch, Madison Mark Warren, Deah Horowitz, and Ozma Shanes Martinez from December and November. And then the January winners will be announced this Friday. On February tenth, there is going to be a Valentine's Day after-school event at three, and on February sixteenth at seven, they'll have their winter orchestra band and chorus winter concert. And again, like I said earlier, for semester ends this Friday, and students are really looking forward to their changing electives.
Okay, and so finally for the high school. Just to reiterate it with a lot of the other, the same schools, the marking period for the high school will be ending on January twenty-eighth, so report cards will definitely be coming soon after that. So, that's something that people will wanna, wanna be lookout for. And then we just have luckily, in the time that's passed from our last meeting, we've had a lot of great sports turnouts for Highland Park High School, with the girls' team actually placing third in the state for the eight-hundred relay during winter track, which is just incredible, as well as both the boys' basketball team and the girls' basketball team on January nineteenth, beating Dunellen. So, that's just absolutely great for the high school as well. And that's pretty much just all the news for the high school as well. So, thank you for all listening.
Thank you both. Any questions or discussion? From the board? Okay, thank you very much. We move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Naposha?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I see that we have two of our students that we're spotlighting, so I'd like to begin this night by passing over the mic. I'm not sure who's going first, Ms. Perez or Ms. Hodge. I'm not sure who's going first, but welcome both of you. Thank you for, for coming on tonight. And I'm gonna turn the proverbial mic over to both of you to begin spotlighting our two high school students tonight.
Okay, well, hello, everyone. I'm Mrs. Hodge, and I am the new choral director for Highland Park Middle School and Highland Park High School. And I'm so thrilled to have the opportunity to work in this district. The students are amazing. I'm here tonight to spotlight my senior, Isaac Wu. I believe he's on with us. I haven't seen his name pop up on the side yet, but I'm here to represent Isaac. Isaac has been working incredibly hard all of his years through high school, even before I came to Highland Park for this achievement. And this, this opportunity for him is really special because I don't believe that Highland Park has had choral representation at the region level in about five to seven years. So, this is super exciting for me, for this choir, and I think it's amazing for such an artistic community like Highland Park and a really wonderful honor for Isaac. He will be representing Highland Park, and he will be singing tenor one in the region to choir, which consists of about two hundred and fifty students from across Middlesex County. So, congratulations to Isaac.
Hi, my name is Ms. Perez. I am the orchestra teacher at the middle and high school. I am very excited to have Vibe Up Shetty here to represent our orchestra. Vibe Up has been working incredibly hard all the way through, you know, from fourth grade when they get to start playing their instruments all the way through now. And is a junior. So, Vibe Up is performing with the regional orchestra, which is about two hundred to one hundred fifty, I think, students across the region. It's a big orchestra, a big achievement. The auditions are extremely rigorous. So, congratulations to Vibe Up. And we have a lovely student body here, so I'm excited that Vibe Up will be with me for, you know, another year in our orchestra. So, congrats, Vibe Up. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, and congratulations to our, our two students. We have, I shared the digital certificates, but we have actual certificates that will head over to, to the high school first thing tomorrow from my office. So, congratulations. And thank you for all of your hard work and, and dedication and representing Highland Park and, and, you know, in, in the world of choir and music for us. And thank you, Ms. Perez and Ms. Hodge. So, at this time, you're certainly more than welcome to stay on. I will be giving a lovely presentation on Start Strong data, but I understand it's been a long day if you want to head on your way. I appreciate it. Thank you again, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I am going to begin my more formal presentation now on our Start, do I have the right Start Strong data? Can you see my screen? All right, perfect. So, tonight I'm going to present on our Start Strong Fall 2021 Administration of the State Assessment. So, this is part of our CUSAC annual reporting that, that we report on this data. Actually, before I begin, I did actually want to say that January, if you're not, if everybody in the world doesn't know, January is Board of Education Recognition Month. So, I wanted to start by recognizing our Board of Education. Thank you all for that, for everything that you do. A thankless job, all volunteering, endless amount of, of time and dedication. So, in honor of board recognition, I wanted to recognize you all and thank you for your service. And also, the, my presentation can be found on the district's homepage entitled "The Start Strong Superintendent's Report." I left it in Google Slide Presentation for Accessibility purposes. So, anybody that is listening on to the, to the Board of Education Zoom call tonight, if you click on the link and you open any accessibility either application on a smartphone device or a Chrome extension, you can follow along through accessibility applications for the presentation. So, with that being said, there is a lot of data in this presentation and a lot of information that's given by the state. So, I'm going to do my very best to generalize with understanding that the presentation is availability through accessible readers for those that, that need the information. So, first, a little bit about the Start Strong data. So, it was administered in the fall. And the idea of the Start Strong was to provide information that was standards-based, that was used by teachers immediately in the classroom. So, it was supposed to give quick information and immediate.
How do I not know that?
Results. You. Thank you. The Start Strong data, as determined by the U.S. Department of Education, satisfied the federal statewide assessment requirements for English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science for the 2020-21 school year. And the spring New Jersey Student Learning Assessment will resume this year in, in the spring. So, it was part of the federal waiver last year to waive the spring data so that we had fall, fall testing instead. So, the Start Strong Fall Assessment does not replace any of our local benchmark data that may already be in place, and it doesn't replace that spring testing that's coming for the summative data. The test design of the Start Strong was based on a subset of prioritized standards from their prior academic school year based on grade-level content. So, for example, if I am a grade-five current ELA student, the Start Strong Assessment data is aligned to a subset of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for fourth-grade ELA. So, essentially, it was a, an assessment of a starting point for this, for the students versus an exit point. So, for example, Algebra I Start Strong would be aligned to the eighth-grade learning standard, so where they left off. The assessment used high-quality items from the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment Item Bank. So, those previous assessments that were used in the past, they were currently using, so they were already vetted test questions. They contained efficient question types to produce on-demand results for educators. So, the idea was we were getting them quickly instead of having to wait. And then it could be administered within forty-five to sixty minutes. So, it's important to note that, you know, the test design, which allowed for the shortening test design, means that we just have to interpret the results a little bit differently than we normally would for our normal state assessment data in terms of proficiency. So, what you can see is the Start Strong data and the content alignment. So, like I said, for example, if I'm a fifth-grade student in ELA, the content that was on my Start Strong Assessment was the grade-four assessment and, and so on, where it gets a little bit wider of the content information is at the science state test. So, grade six measured grades three through five. If I was a ninth grader sitting for that assessment, I received assessment questions from middle school, and then my, the grade twelve students received it for nine through eleven. So, those were more grade-band areas. So, a couple of caveats for the result interpretation considerations. So, they suggest when we're publicly reporting results to consider the impacts of COVID-19 on learning and testing conditions, as well as the impact on student participation in the assessments, which were administered in person. So, that will be information when we communicate the reports, which we have to do, home to, to families. We will include a little, a note about the interpretation of the results to include that information. We should not compare any of this individual school or district's Start Strong data to any state-level data for Start Strong, nor should it be made in comparison with the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment data. So, so I can only just give the data. We're not looking to compare the data. So, I can't compare it amongst other students across the state, nor can I compare it to our previous state assessment data. So, it's just really sort of single, single moments in time, a snapshot. And then also, our Start Strong Assessments were not designed to predict future student performance on New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, nor is it designed to eliminate what a score, what score a student would receive if they've taken the NJSLA in the spring of 2021. So, the idea of what it's supposed to do is give, give us information on district-level curriculum planning and revisiting prerequisite concepts and skills. So, as that good formative data that the teachers would need to inform how, how they are providing instruction this year to individual students and groups of students, it allows us an opportunity to evaluate our scope and sequence based on distribution of student support needs, providing professional learning supports for differentiation and scaffolding based on these student results, and using the individual student reports for conversations between parents and educators on where their child might need support at the beginning of the year. In addition, the New Jersey Department of Education encourages districts to clearly and promptly provide information about the context of Start Strong data, including its limitations as a result of the pandemic or other factors. The results should include clearly worded context that such data are incomplete and are not representative of the makeup of the district or the school or population. For example, if the district sees low particip rate, low participation rates at a school as a result of school quarantine or skewed results, you know, as a result of quarantine, that, that type of, of information. As always, assessment data should be analyzed alongside other important measures of student outcomes, like our homegrown benchmark assessments, teacher-created formative assessments, which are ongoing in the classroom, attendance data to provide a more complete perspective on resources, support, and student success. So, with all of that being said, with all of that caveat, here is our data. So, the first thing I want to report on is the number of students that took the test. And so, the largest group of students I believe we have are our current eighth-grade students, our current eighth-grade students. I think we have about a hundred and thirty-five students. That's our largest group. But anywhere we have any, and every grade band is around a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty students roughly. And so, you can see that our, our numbers of students that took the test are actually relatively high, higher than normal that take a state assessment. So, you know, for example, we had a hundred and fourteen students sit and take the ELA four test. We had ninety-nine students take the Math seven test, but again, not, once we get to middle school, not all of our students take Math seven. So, it's a good representation of that population. A hundred students take the geometry test. Same thing, a hundred students take the, the Science nine test. So, you can see overall that we actually had larger-than-normal participation rates in our state assessment data. So, the way they record the results of the student data for Start Strong are levels of support. So, there are three levels of support. There's more support needed, some support needed, and less support needed. So, that's how they categorize the three, the three scores. So, for example, you can see in our English, oops, excuse me, our English Language, Language Arts. In fourth grade, we had about fifty-five percent of our students that needed more support, twenty percent need some support, and twenty-five percent need less support. So, that is how we would interpret them. Grade five, forty percent need more support, twenty need some support, and forty need less support. So, it, it kind of ranges in terms of where overall our students are in need of support, which is, the data is pretty similar to what we see in general when our students come into the classroom. Anyway, we usually have students that, you know, are working sort of on grade level. You know, just slightly below grade level, and then, you know, maybe a, a couple of grade levels below. Here is where our math support levels are again, more support, some support, and less support. So, you can see actually in our math, we, we definitely have a lot more students in general that need more support for mathematics. Grade eight, grades four, five, and eight, actually, interestingly enough, we had, were in, you know, the, the mid to high sixty percent of our students need more support coming into those classes, where, you know, for eighth grade, for example, only three percent need less support. So, we can definitely see in mathematics areas in which our students definitely need more support, maybe in, you know, except geometry, where the majority of our students actually needed less support. And then science, the same thing. So, grade six, for example, about forty percent of our students need more support, thirty-three percent need some support, and twenty-six need less support. So, it looks like the, the students that need less support, maybe in our twelfth grade, is sort of kind of divided there in terms of the support that they would need for, for science, which is interesting because our twelfth graders, by that point, not all of them need to even take science. So, at this point, not, not sure what the teachers could do, except for those that are in science, use that information for those students that are, that are taking science as a, as a twelfth grader. So, then I further broke our data into our subgroups. So, you could see our subgroups where they are in terms of needing more support, some support or less support. So, the little hash marks in the data set just mean there were zero, just zero percent. So, I left them blank. So, you can see our students with disabilities in grade four ELA, for example, eighty-three percent need more support, and seventeen need some support. A hundred percent of our English language learners need more support in grade four ELA. Same thing, a lot of our economically disadvantaged, seventy-nine percent of them need more support. And then if you can look, our black students in ELA grade four need more support. Same thing with our Hispanic population. And, you know, about fifty percent of our students that, that are two or more races. So, definitely areas that in grade four ELA that we need some more support. You can see a similar, similar trend with our grade four math. Students with disabilities, you know, seventy-nine percent of them need more support. English language learners, seventy-five percent need more support. Our economically disadvantaged, eighty-two percent need more support. And same thing, stronger numbers with black, Hispanic, and two or more races. Those higher percentages needing more support in grade four mathematics. Grade five ELA. So, you'll actually see very similar trends through the, through the majority of the data sets, just fluctuating a little bit here. You know, sixty percent of our English language learners need more support versus forty, need some support, but seventy-one with disability, seventy-one percent of students with disabilities need more support. You know, black, our black students, eighty-two percent of the black students in grade five ELA need more support, and fifty-eight percent of our Hispanic students in grade five ELA need more support. Again, similar trends with, with the math percentages. Students with disabilities, about ninety percent need more support. Our English language learners, eighty percent need more support. Economically disadvantaged, eighty-eight need, eighty-eight percent of them need more support. For grade five math, ninety-one percent of our black students need more support. Ninety-six percent of our Hispanic students need more support. Two or more races, eighty-eight percent need more support. So, it definitely is very important information the teachers have access to, our content supervisors have access to, to make sure we're, we're putting that in, you know, all of this, this, wrapping our heads around the data so we can provide the supports needed. Grade eight ELA, a hundred percent of our English language learners need more support. Students with disabilities, seventy-eight percent need more support. Our economically disadvantaged, sixty-six need more support. And then, you know, we have sort of a mix for some of our, like, two or more races, black and Hispanic, you know, around the fifty percent mark, need more support. And then, you know, then it, it varies there between some support and less support, divides up equally. For grade six math, we have students with disabilities, ninety-four percent need more support. Our English language learner, sixty-seven percent need more support. Eighty percent of our students that are economically disadvantaged need more support. Eighty-three percent of our black students in grade ma, grade six math need more support. Eighty-four percent of our Hispanic students need more support. And forty-five percent two or more races need support in grade six math. In science, a hundred percent of our English language learners need more support. Seventy-eight percent students with disabilities. Sixty-nine percent of our students that are economically disadvantaged need some more support in grade nine science. And then seventy-one percent of our Hispanic students need more support in grade six science. And then seventy one percent of our Hispanic students need more support in grade six science. And then grade, uh, seven ELA, um, fifty two percent of our students with disabilities need some more support, a hundred percent of our English language learners need more support. Um, and then, you know, forty percent of our, our black students need more support in grade seven ELA. Grade seven math, again, uh, now that we get into seventh grade math, remember the, the, um, numbers. We have different numbers of students taking these, these particular classes, because here's where we start tracking. Um, but we have seventy seven or seventy seven percent of students with disabilities need more support. A hundred percent of our English language learners need more support. Sixty five percent of students that are economically disadvantaged need more support. And eighty six, excuse me, eighty six percent of our black students need more support in grade seven math. Sixty three percent of our Hispanic students need more support in math and sixty seven percent of our students that are identifies two or more races need more support. For grade eight ELA, sixty seven percent of our students with disabilities need more support. Seventy nine percent of our English language learners need more support. And then we're teetering on, you know, the fifty percent mark for, um, black and, and Hispanic. Um, and I'll just, uh, make a note that American Indian and Alaska native, there's, the numbers are very, very small. So it's, you know, of two students, one might need it, one might not type of, of situation with, with those numbers. Grade eight math, eighty seven percent of our students with disabilities needs more support. Eighty percent of our students that are economically disadvantaged, uh, need more support in eighth grade math. And eighty nine percent of our black students need more support in grade eight math. And seventy one percent of our Hispanic or Latino students need, uh, more support in grade eight math. And a hundred percent of our students that are two or more races need more support in grade eight math. In grade nine ELA, a hundred percent of our English language learners need support in grade nine ELA. Uh, forty six percent of our economically disadvantaged students and, you know, sixty three percent of the black students need support in grade nine ELA. In our grade nine science, uh, progress, um, sixty three percent of our students with disabilities need some, some more support in grade nine science, a hundred percent of our English language learners. Fifty nine percent of our students that are economically disadvantaged. And then, um, sixty three and sixty seven percent, um, appropriately for our black and Hispanic students that need grade nine, uh, science support. Our grade ten ELA percentages, um, our English language learner sixty seven percent need more support. Uh, fifty six percent of our black students need more support in grade ten ELA. In grade twelve science, um, seventy five percent of our students with disabilities need more support. A hundred percent of our English language learners need more support. And sixty one percent of our economics, economically disadvantaged students need more support in grade twelve science. And sixty seven percent of our black students and fifty eight percent of our Hispanic students and seventy five percent of our two or more races need more support in grade twelve science. Uh, in terms of algebra one, um, you know, we're looking still relatively, uh, high, um. But more so, we need, uh, ninety two percent of our students with disabilities need support in algebra one. Eighty percent of our English language learners, ninety two percent of our economically disadvantaged students. A hundred percent of our black students, eighty nine percent of our Hispanic students, seventy two percent of our white students. And fifty percent of two or more races all need more support in algebra one. So algebra one's definitely an area where we need to, to see overall for, for everyone there. Geometry, seventy three percent of our students with disabilities need support in geometry. Seventy percent of our students that are economically disadvantaged need support there. Fifty percent of our black students, fifty eight percent of our Hispanic students and sixty four percent of, of students that are two or more races need support in geometry. And algebra two, ninety percent of our students with disabilities need support, sixty per, sixty seven percent of our English language learners need support. And fifty percent of our black students need support in, or need more support in algebra two. So, um, all of this data is, is actually really, really important. As much as I know, we don't put a lot of stake. Um, or weight on state assessment data, the information is incredibly important. So a couple of things that I wanted to make a note of that we provide for this ongoing support, um, and, and the use of this data. So we are continuing to provide really great and robust title one after school enrichment programs. So these are based on teacher recommendations and class performance and, and the use of this data. Um, among all the other data points, um, like our benchmark data and the formative assessment data. To identify students that need some, uh, after school enrichment. Um, Bartle and Irving Title One, uh, we're offering an after school mu- multi sensory literacy enrichment program, which is Orton Gillingham. So I'm really excited that we have a lot of, a lot more teachers that are trained in OG that will be providing, um, enrichment and support for students after school. Um, and that's for small groups, uh, a very targeted students that need that assistance. We use, um, the use of data across departments and grade levels. So we're looking to identify trends in performance. Um, uh, in the performance based on the state standard. So looking at some trends and using the data. So the, the content area supervisors are working with the departments and the grade levels to look at this data and, and their data to look for trends and look for ways to, um, to increase the support in the classroom for the students. At the middle and high school, we are offering, uh, more sections of our read one eighty and math one eighty program. So that was one of the things we had done. At a recent board meeting in the fall was increase our part time math intervention teacher at the middle school to full time so that we can service more students in need of gap filling. So we have those programs for intervention at the middle and high schools. And in addition, we have vertical articulation documents, which are really great, um, documents that the content supervisors and, and directors have been working with the teachers on, and that basically identifies. Um, you know, areas that they felt they couldn't cover last year as a result of, of the crazy year that we had and um, looking at where they may have left off, things that they didn't cover, things that they might not have covered to the extent that they normally do if they were in person. Um, so that helps to create more vertical articulation between the, uh, grade levels and, and content areas as well to help support the students. So that is all that I have to share on my presentation. So I'll open it up for questions.
Christina, I'll, I'll start it off just. Um, how does this, I know it says, it says in your presentation not to compare it to the New Jersey SLA. Um, data, but what happened, did the test look similar? Like, is this data pretty reflective of, of, uh, those that would have needed, uh, needed to more support, say, two years ago? Is this kind of all similar?
Yeah, I mean, i- it is, but it's not. So they use very similar questions, but, um, it looks like they were only using, uh, multiple guess questions. Because they needed data that was really quick that they could turn over quickly versus the, um, short constructed responses and extended constructed responses, which, you know, those are the really robust, great higher level thinking questions that get at the students' abilities to, for example, in math, use multiple strategies, explain their answers, that, that kind of thing. So, um, they, there are some questions that are good indicators. So the information is, is, is a little bit useful, but, um, it, it's definitely not anything that we can compare to.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Christina, do you think teachers got a sense of? You know, to me as a parent and, and as a school board member, and as somebody who just pays attention to education policy in general, I was kind of horrified that as soon as kids came back, they were plunked in front of these, you know, that the state was like, hey, kids, how was the pandemic? Welcome back to school. Here's a standardized test. You know, like, did the teachers get a sense of how kids responded to that just kind of in general? I mean, because the data just seems, I don't know. It's hard to know to what to make of data, you know, for a test administered under such just absolutely wild circumstances.
Yeah, and I think I agree with you, and I think the teachers feel the same way and got a sense of like, what are we actually even going to use this data for? Um, and I think, and I think they kind of, that's why I just took the language. Actually, this is what the state told me to present on. You know, as, as normal, but that's why I took the language and I didn't even change it to show you that they don't even hold much stock in it either.
Right. It was kind of like, I have to do something. So, you know, and then kids kind of get that, like, is this even for anything, you know? Like, why, my, why am I bothering with this, you know, and? It just seems like this is one of those kind of perfunctory, you know, things that, you know, teachers and students and districts and everyone is kind of forced to go through for accountability measures to satisfy federal requirements. And then it's like, oh, what does it mean, you know?
No, and to your point, I think what's frustrating is that now we have to do this again in the spring.
Right.
And that's so frustrating and infuriating that now it's like, okay, so we did this, we barely just got the data back. So as quick and immediate as it was, it's January and we're getting the data back. So now, now we're supposed to use that. And oh, by the way, in April, now I'm going to test them and where they are all, all year. And it, it just seems super frustrating. And then to piggyback on that, um, I'm not sure how many of you are familiar, but the state put out regulations for, um, the graduation requirement. So in the past, there were multiple pathways that students can take to achieve graduation. The state tests were one of them, but there were other options, including, um, ACTs, SATs, portfolio appeals. There were a myriad of options. The state is now saying that they must.
Take it first.
Or the state test in order to even qualify for those other options. So it's like, so now you had coming back from a pandemic where everyone's stressed and anxious about being in school, you're going to give them a state assessment. Then you're saying, okay, now I'm going to give you another state assessment. And oh, by the way, you must sit for it if you even want to qualify for any other option. I just, or, I mean, I don't know how many people are actually going to watch my presentation on this, but I think they're out of their minds.
Yeah, and it doesn't even match their own regulations, which say that when a kid is a freshman, they should know exactly what the standard is going to be for graduation. So they're really, they're like, I mean, they're just, it's a hot mess.
Yes. Yeah. So that was all protocol that I'm legally supposed to do according to CUSAC. There is the presentation.
Right. And you did it well. Thank you.
Thank you. I, you know, listen, for what it was, it's, uh, it pains me to have to do it, but.
Yeah, hi, thank you, Christina. I, I just wanted to add the, to the level frustration with this Start Strong, because I had to, um, work with a few, um, teachers and, and students on administering it. And I will say for many students with disabilities, um, there were huge issues with just the accessibility of the test, like IP, um, requirements the students had first, um, you know, standardized tests weren't even being, um, followed. Uh, based on what was provided in this test. So, you know, there were just so many issues, um, that really made it frustrating, I think, for all of us, right, involved in the process. And as, you know, to, to your points here, it makes us really question, you know, the, the value um, in this test. It's like, let's just keep that standardized test machine rolling, right? And so, um, yeah, I'm glad to hear that, you know, our district is being the way that we are, um, and knowing that we're going to really take a lot of this with a grain of salt. But I do want to say, um, that thinking about how we're, you know, we have that portion of S R two monies that we want to, you know, really put towards and have to put towards, um, academic supports. And this makes me think about the conversations we have in curriculum instruction and equity and excellence about, um, culturally relevant pedagogy, asset based pedagogy, and really making sure that we're um, kind of doubling down on a commitment to that so that, uh, we don't have, um, students who probably have, you know, who definitely, I think, have many skills that aren't reflected right in these state tests, um, that, uh, that we are finding ways to tap into. Um, what isn't being tapped into currently, right? So I think that this just reminds me of how important it is for us to continue to, to really um, invest in that approach to supporting students.
Thank you, Monique. I think it'll be good too to revisit. I know we were, we've been talking about even at the high school, our, um, you know, uh, more flexible learning pathways and, and more, you know, robust options for students. So I think, you know, we'll, we'll follow up in, in both CNI and ENE. Uh, to continue having these, these conversations and, and bringing more information in ways that we're, we're supporting the students.
Yeah, I'm actually looking forward and excited about those conversations. Cause I think we're going to see some really exciting and promising, um, results. Uh, that are going to be truly more impactful than, um, you know, these kinds of standardized tests.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other comments or questions? Or Christina? If none, thank you very much, Christina, to Dr. Dr. Makosia. Um, and we are moving on to public comment. Uh, I'll read the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Word policies, oh, one six four and oh, one six seven, establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. During this meeting, we ask that all members of the public mute themselves unless they are speaking during, during public comment. If necessary, we may mute you ourselves. We may leave, you may leave your video on or off at your option. If we experience bandwidth problems and believe that limiting video could help, we may turn video off. We will have one or more, um, opportunities for public comment. If you wish to speak, please raise your virtual hand in Zoom and wait for me to call on you. If you cannot raise your hand or I miss your virtual hand, please turn on your video camera and raise your real hand. New Jersey law requires us to inform you that all commenters must behave appropriately in Highland Park. This means no screaming obscenities or inappropriate video displays. In the event of a speaker's inappropriate beha- behavior, they will be muted. This is the first, our first public comment period. We will have one more at the end of the meeting. Um, this will be for thirty minutes and up to three minutes per speaker. Um, please give your name and address before speaking. And, uh, Linda, can you help and be timekeeper like you did last time? I think that was a yes.
You're muted, Linda.
Sorry, I clicked the button. It didn't take.
Oh, yeah.
Seems to happen a lot with me today.
Yes.
Um, uh, I just, yes, I'll, I'll take the time. And I wanted to just re- remind everyone to give me their address.
Sure. Uh, Rob Scott, you have your hand up? Want to start, you want to start us off?
Sure. Uh, my name is, uh, Rob Scott. I live at twenty five South Second Avenue in Highland Park. Uh, I have two daughters in the high school. I have some questions. Uh, the superintendent and the board will be familiar with these questions because I've asked them before. I'm asking again because they have not been answered. They've been, um, ignored. Uh, so question number one. Uh, how many, uh, rapid tests have been ordered by the district and when? Um, this is the question, uh, you promised to answer at the last board meeting, but have not yet answered. I inquired, uh, some days after the board meeting about it. Uh, no answer was provided. Um, each time I ask the question, um, the answer comes back. Uh, I will let you know when they come in. The question is, how many have been ordered? Um, since the last meeting, um, we learned that fifty tests became available. I guess they arrived. Um, were only fifty ordered or have two thousand been ordered? Um, so that's the question, and I really, really want an answer. Uh, next question. What is the full report on the provision of N ninety five or KN ninety five masks to all students? Uh, when will the schools be able to move away from cloth and surgical masks to higher quality masks, uh, that have been uh, proven necessary, given the higher transmissibility of the Omicron variant? Question number three. Can we get an update on how the dashboard works? It still remains very unclear when it is updated and if reports from at home tests are included. How is it systematic data collection? Uh, and what reason do any of us have to trust it? Um, it seems it's just a self-report from some parents. Uh, rumors are widespread of, uh, people refusing to test or not reporting because they are afraid it will lead to the closure of schools. Um, so how is this systematic data collection? Why should we trust it? And number four. Will the district start collecting data on booster shots? Will the district mandate three shots more generally? For instance, will the staff mandate be, uh, moved to three booster shots? This is important because the evidence now shows that it's only boosted people, um, who are likely um, in a situation where there is efficacy, uh, against, uh, infection and therefore spread. Uh, I'd also like to know, um, specifically, uh, given the higher, uh, transmissibility of Omicron, will the risk assessment that was done for extracurricular activities, um, be done again? Um, you will recall at prior board meetings, um, I've pointed out that the risk assessment that was done, um, was pretty problematic. Number five. What other mitigation measures are planned? Are we going to get open lunch for ninth graders, eighth graders, seventh graders? What about outdoor lunch for the other grades? What kind of ventilation infiltration improvements are planned? What about outdoor lunch for the other grades? What kind of ventilation infiltration improvements are planned? Um, I understood that there was some lunch available for that. So I'm just going to conclude, given that we are midway through Omicron, and maybe half of the folks who will catch Omicron are still to come. And given we have no tests, no N ninety-fives, no KN ninety-fives, why is the virtual option being halted? For families with immunocompromised uh, children? Why are you forcing those families to risk truancy and/or students' risk loss of credit? And finally, can we plan for next winter? How about a change of our calendar and a plan for testing on reindeer next year? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Um, when we move in on. Other hands? Clara Scott? I see your hand. Go ahead, Clara, just unmute.
Uh, hi, my name is Claire Scott. I am at twenty-five South Second Avenue, Park. I am sixteen. I am a junior. Um. I don't really understand why virtual option is being taken away. Um. It is my understanding students who has positive with COVID. Are still being allowed to zoom rooms and participate in school virtually while kids who want to self-quarantine. Um, or children who are sick with other illnesses like strep or um, bronchitis aren't able to do that. Um, I am diagnosed with major depressive anxiety disorder. And I cannot imagine myself going to school and learning anything. I cannot imagine. Myself going into school and feeling safe environment where I have been cussed out for asking students to wear their masks properly. Where I have been threatened for asking students to wear their masks properly. And I don't see how it hurts anyone to open up a Zoom room and let me partake in class virtually. When that option is being provided to other students who are homesick with coronavirus. I'm sick too. It's just a different type of sick. And I cannot focus and I cannot. Perform well um, in school if I'm forced to go back in person. Um. It's very stressful. Speaking right now to you guys is very stressful to me. Um, I would much. Rather deal with the stress of trying to maintain my credits and my attendance. Then being forced to go to a place where I am likely to get. A virus could ever alter my life and leave me stuck with long COVID. Or switch on a genetic mutation and leave me, you know, permanently. Screwed over, you know, for lack of better words, or passing it on to my dad who is immunocompromised. Or my mother, who is a nurse who works in labor and delivery. Um. I think it's unfair and ableist that I'm not able to attend school virtually. At most, it'll just be for a few more weeks while Omicron, you know, the curve bends down. Um.
Two seconds.
That's to me.
Thank, thank you, Clara, for, for your honesty and, and sincerity in, in talking to us and sharing your concerns. Okay, I, I do appreciate what you had to say, Russ. Thank you. Other speakers? Seeing none, unless I miss somebody. We are going to go, we're going to move on to. Board committee reports. There will be another opportunity for uh, public comment towards the end of the meeting. Uh, curriculum and instruction, that would be Michelle, who's not here, not able to be here tonight. Monique, did you want to um? Uh, give that report?
You unmute myself. I'm talking. Um, sure, yeah, I'll go ahead and read it. I just pulled up the notes.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, so the curriculum and instruction committee met on January eleventh. And the first item on the agenda was the parent mini-series. Uh, that I believe is still ongoing. The first session was on the eighteenth, um, and that. Mini-series, mini-series is focused on mental well-being of our, of our, of our students. Um, social and emotional benchmarks and how to help children thrive in areas of social and emotional um. Wellness, uh, as well as a session on conflict resolution skills. So I believe there's a total of three sessions all, altogether. One covers K through five, another six through twelve. And then the January eighteenth one, which is past tense, was a kind of an overview for all grades. So I'd love to hear, you know, how that series is going. Um, it was funded through S R two monies. Um, and it was reported to us that paperless communication went out to all families um, and was posted on Facebook. Principals also included it in their building letter, so I hope the attendance uh, was uh, high for these, for this series. Um, we also discussed uh, the. February professional development, uh, a bit of an unfortunate update is that Mallory's Army, the anti-bullying. Uh, workshop presentation had to be canceled because the organization indicated that they only do in-person workshops. Uh, and that they have decided to pause all workshops due to the pandemic surge. The February professional development is, is fully remote, um, so it just did not fit with Mallory's Army's current model. Um, the leadership team at that time was considering, and I'm assume still considering, using um, the afternoon time slot that Mallory's Army did have. For teacher reflection time with small group breakouts, uh, for them to discuss the morning workshops and brainstorm. Um, implementation ideas for practice. And then the third item, uh, we uh, talked about was the proposed new high school course, multi-variable calculus. Um, and this is the second part of an early discussion on this that we had at a previous curriculum meeting, meeting. But Dr. Nicosia was able to present some data. Uh, eleventh and twelfth graders across math classes were surveyed to determine the amount of interest in a multi-variable calc and. Class as well as interest in the statistics course, uh, just to have a couple of options. Uh, results showed that about half of the students are, that, that completed the survey are interested in multi-variable calculus. And half were interested in statistics. Um. We uh, curriculum, if there were approval of a new course, in this case, the multi-variable calculus or statistics. Um, it doesn't necessarily mean the course would get run, the curric- would, the curriculum would have to be written over the summer. Uh, and then, of course, a course guide would be developed and proposed. Uh, and we just kind of discussed uh, the, the benefits or the needs for adding, um, you know. Or, or making that multi-variable class a class as opposed to leaving it as is, which is currently um. Students who are interested take it through a moot course. Um, and. I think the only harm in approving a new course, we, we talked about is that the. But fiscally would be a few hundred dollars into writing the course and possibly securing material. So that was just kind of one of the other areas of um. Consideration that we talked about. And I believe there hasn't yet been a firm decision on this, but it sounds like. Um, leadership is kind of leaning towards uh, leaving the multi-variable calculus as is. Um, and, and uh, thinking of possibly about uh, looking back at that issue in the future. And correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Nicosia, but it was a while ago since we met, so I just want to make sure I'm reporting that correctly.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And then we talked about uh, a ski club revival. Several students reached out to uh, Mr. Richardson about doing a ski club. And a few parents offered to fundraise or pay for students who are interested, but um, may not be able to afford to participate. Um, and they're looking into how they can approve possibly a field trip to um, Shawnee, uh, which, you know, would be an expensive trip. Uh, so again, talking about ways, they were talking about ways to um. To uh, finance this and fundraise for it. Christina suggested starting with a kind of one-time trip package as opposed to one that would involve multiple visits. Um, this, because this would not be a formal club activity, of course, the, the issue of fundraising would need to be figured out. So the committee uh, discussed the importance of also assessing students' interest in new clubs uh, more generally. And Christina indicated that administrators do regularly encourage students to start new clubs, or at least present ideas for new clubs. Recently, some students expressed an interest, for example, in gaming and video design clubs. Um, with Mr., Mr. Harper volunteered to. Oversee, oh, I'm sorry, this is getting back to the ski club. Mr. Harper did volunteer to oversee the ski club. Uh, should that get off the ground, and they're in the process of um, trying to put together the paperwork for a formal Schedule B club application. Well, so we kind of had, you know, get a, a, a extended discussion more globally about uh, clubs and how student interest can be um. Used to generate ideas for new clubs, um, as a result of this key ski club idea. Then we talked about uh, the flexible learning uh, pathways uh, plan, and, and Dr. Cozy gave us an update on that. Um, just a little bit of background for those who may not have heard the initial discussion on this in a previous board meeting. Um. Uh, Dr. Nicosia just talked about how the pandemic did allow some students to thrive through more independent learning opportunities. Um, and so she reviewed some independent learning projects that some schools have been offering to students for course credits. And proposed the pilot pro- program, the flexible learning pathways program. And the way that it works is participating students would work on a project of interest and get equivalent course credits for their work. Uh, whether it's a math course, uh, you know, science course, humanities course. Um, the students' work would of course have to align with the course curriculum requirements in order to, to be approved for the credits. Uh, but the pilot program option uh, was presented to, as just a pilot again, to the wise and global citizenship students. Interested students completed a form in which they detailed their project idea and the particular course for which they were seeking credits. Five students completed the form and four are currently confirmed. Uh, most of the students will be participating, uh, most of the students are Y students who will be participating um, through that program with Ms. Martin. Um, one student is in both Y's and global citizenship. Uh, the humanities and STEM supervisors were tasked with determining uh, the alignment piece here, making sure that the curriculum does align. Um, or the students' proj- projects and the development of their project does align with the curriculum. Um, and the supervisors are also going to be, be developing evaluation protocols for the projects. So, you know, really exciting about, to hear about that program, and we'd love to, to follow and, and hear how it unfolds and develops. And hopefully can become a more full-out um, uh, part of our curriculum. And then the seventh item we discussed was the resolution to support the teaching of the full and accurate history of the United States of America. Uh, the curriculum committee, committee reviewed this uh, resolution, which was drafted in the Equity and Excellence Committee. Um, and agreed to place it on the board meeting agenda for this evening. And policies, policies, policies in need of review for audit. Um, which Christina was gracious enough to really go through um, with the fine-tooth comb, I believe. Um, the policies that needed to be reviewed based on an audit and um, you know, pretty straightforward, nothing really uh, stood out. Except for the fact that one of our policies, a very important one, screening for dyslexia, um, actually had no adoption date. So we needed to make sure, we, we need to make sure we update that and get that on the books. Of course, we do screen for dyslexia. Um, certainly, it's just a little policy, um, a matter of stamping it in our policy. So that's something that we will be working on. And that is it.
Thank you, Monique. That was a very thorough, thorough report. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions or?
Uh, yeah, Monique, sorry, guys, Rob, quick question for you on the uh, resolution. Uh, are we considering uh, amending the resolution to uh, add Asian-American studies? Which was uh, passed, I guess, or signed last week? And then also, will we be looking at a policy twenty-two hundred to amend that also to include Asian-American studies?
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I actually, um, we have that topic on our agenda for the next curriculum instruction committee, the new requirement for AAPI. Um, history and studies. I believe, and I thought about the resolution, but I believe that the language is pretty comprehensive. And talking about the need for um, diversity inclusion um, for all uh, groups. So I think that that kind of covers, and again, we can maybe talk about this, I think that sort of covers, you know, all areas. Wasn't just targeting a particular um, uh, group. Uh, so, but to that second, your second uh, question, and that is pertaining to the, the policy update. I think that's something that we definitely need to talk about, and we cover this um, conversation in curriculum instruction.
My guess is that Strauss Esme will be sending that to us forthwith.
I'm surprised we haven't gotten it yet, actually.
Because it's, I mean, it's, it'll probably come out in their next policy alert. You know, they tend to do things in clumps, so I would think that would force some revision on a couple of policies. So I am sure that will be coming down the pike at us.
Yep.
Any other questions for curriculum and instruction?
Anne, Anne has a question.
Go ahead, sorry.
Thanks, yeah, real quick. Um, Monique, I'm sorry, I missed part of your sentence about multi-variable calculus, multi-variable calculus. What was the uh, the outcome is that it, there wouldn't be much cost to it, but we're not going to do it this year. I just missed the reasoning on that.
Yeah, I think, well, I know, I didn't actually explain the reasoning on not doing it right now. And I think the main reasoning was that um, what we're doing is working. So students are getting access to this, students who are interested are getting access to this higher level uh, math course. Uh, through their moot independent study work and seems to be working fine. And I think they're, because the interest was half and half between multi-variable calculus and statistics. Um, I think the idea was leadership team didn't really see any, you know, compelling reason to go ahead and, and adopt this. Or move forward with adopting it right now as it's a new course. That's again, my understanding.
Thanks.
Yeah, and the, yeah, and the cost was just the, the cost of the materials and, and with a few hundred dollars for pos- just securing materials and writing the course. Was just additional data that um, Christina provided for us.
Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, can I just ask, like, uh, how many students does it take before it's more cost-effective to just run the course? As opposed to a bunch of independent studies?
Yeah, agreed. I can definitely look into that and, 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 and let you know. I know part of the conversation came up about, you know, just making sure we provided. You know, equitable options for, for students in mathematics. Um, you know, it's something that's, that's really big in our radar, and we look at the students that are taking. Um, the, our AP Calc and our, our higher level classes right now. Um, it's, it, right now is not a diverse group of, of students. So um, part of the discussion too that we were having is, is, you know, is um, multi-variable, you know, that right push? For, for our work that we're doing, um, or are there other ways that we can um, provide um, robust mathematics course offerings? For um, all of our students?
I, I, I guess I'd just like to make the point that, I mean, what's happening now, I mean, and this, this happened with my daughters as well. Is that, you know, we just paid seven hundred dollars each for them to take the Johns Hopkins Independent Study. But in, in effect, what that really limits the program to is families that can afford. That outlay for a really good independent study course. And having it as part of the regular curriculum, you know, even though it's not a really, you know, diverse group, there, there's some students from. Uh, you know, a broad spectrum of groups in the high school that do end up in the course. And uh, it, it essentially rules it out for students that are from, you know, financially disadvantaged families.
Well, the, the.
Independent study work.
Oh, yeah, let me just preface it that the, the open MOOC MIT, so it's an MIT course that's free.
Right, but I, I guess what I'm, I'm disagreeing with, I, I disagree that the open MIT courseware is similar. In quality to the Johns Hopkins and other ones that you pay more for. So, y- you know, y- you are offering something, but it's not the same thing that's available to families that have more resources.
Okay. I do think we want to be sure that, I mean, we, we did have a lot of public sort of, you know, reluctance when it came to the math detracking. You know, which, which is a, a definitely priority for me, but I think we want to keep the public that was concerned. You know, make sure that they're aware that we are thinking of everyone, you know, including the high achieving students regardless of. Uh, sort of the demographics of the class. It's not usually something I say, but. I mean, if we really don't have a teacher or something like that, then we just can't do it. Um. And if we really need all our teachers to like, help kids get on grade level, then I certainly understand that, but. I don't know. Let's, I'd love to know how many kids were interested, and I'm sorry, Monique might have said that, and I just missed it. So there was some noise in my house, like, right at that moment.
Actually didn't give the numbers from the um, from the survey, which, let me see if I can pull that up quickly. Uh, that's not linked here. Um.
Yeah, I can, I can get some of that information.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you. Is the MOOC just a, is it, it's a lecture only, or is there interaction? I mean, I, I know there's different ways to take a MOOC for credit, for not for credit.
Uh, for this particular one, I'm, I'm not right, really sure, because I didn't take it.
There's no interaction for the MIT.
Yeah, it's just, you just listen to the, the lectures. Yeah, that's really. You know, it's not, it's not an adequate substitute, but maybe we can't provide an adequate substitute. I, I hate to see. you know, it's not, it's not an adequate substitute, but maybe we can't provide an adequate substitute, I hate to see us ruling it out, though.
I think I got this.
Doesn't fit our priorities or.
Yeah, I think the, I, I don't know, I got the sense that it's not a matter of ruling it out completely. But one, it's about having this open conversation and really looking at the data more closely, right? And kind of getting a sense of where the interests lie more globally and then thinking about, okay, if it's not something right now that needs to be an initiative or should be initiative, perhaps it's something down the line that can be considered, but I do agree that, you know, thinking about students who really want to challenge and are ready to take that challenge, making that option available to them is, is just as important as certainly working on providing more equitable access for all of our students. But I think the numbers, when we, when we discussed them, were pretty balanced in terms of the, the interest. And so that was the other thing we talked about, we have students who wanted to take statistics, just as much as we had students that wanted to take multivariable calculus. So, you know, sort of juggling these, these different interests in math, which are exciting, it's exciting to hear, but then meeting that need is, I think, a conversation we're going to have to keep have, keep having.
My guess is that some of the people that chose statistics would probably take multivariate calculus and some that, you know, I mean, it's, they're both advanced math classes, I, I assume, or maybe it's basic statistics, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know how much, I'm sure there was overlap, I don't know how much overlap.
I mean, if it's, we're talking about advanced math students, I think a lot of them would like to take an advanced math class and they're not like, sort of focused enough to know whether like they really want to pursue a career in multivariate calculus or whatever. You know, so I, I don't know that the division there in preferences means we don't have enough people who would take one or the other if it was offered. But yeah, I'd like to hear more about how many people are interested in that sort of thing, thank you, Monique and Dr. Nikos.
Mark, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I, I did, thank, thank, thank you, Marilyn. I, I have experience with the MIT MOOC myself and I have to agree with Chris that I wasn't very impressed with something I was interested in. Perhaps if there is a better program and it sounds like there is, and it's $700 and perhaps we have 10 students, 12 students, 15 students, the district could pay or pay for families that were free or reduced lunch or something to get them a better course and maybe not use the resources that we need in math to get kids up to level. So perhaps Christina, you could look into that.
Yeah, I mean, at that point, if we're going to pay for that, you know, we also pay for the independent study teacher as well. So I think it comes to a, if, if we're going to pay both, then we might just, might as well just offer the course, which isn't a problem. It's just, you know, right now, the, the number of, the, the demographic of, of our students taking those high, higher classes are, are white and Asian students and, you know, we were looking at it from, you know, sort of more an, an equity and access lens for, for higher level math classes, because we have something that currently is in existence and up till this point, I didn't hear much backlash on it per se. I mean, now that if it's coming to light that it's a problem of what we're offering, then we may have to revisit what, what we're currently offering. But, you know, the, the lens that we had prior to this conversation was more about that the, the, the majority of our students that are taking that class, those, those classes are, are white and Asian and how do we provide more options for, for all of our students to have access? You know, what, what kind of courses would, would, would students really want? That was the conversation, so we're not, we're not, not, we're not saying we don't want it, we're just trying to think of what, what is, what are the best options for the students and we don't want to be quick with a decision just because we have some students that, that sort of need it or want it because we have something right now.
Certainly, I, I do think we need to be a little careful about even suggesting that, well, the Asian students don't need it, you know what I mean? I mean, I, I realized that this is good, we're having an open conversation, right? Because when we put resources toward support and remediation and enrichment at different levels of math, obviously, you know, you can't pay for everything. And I think this board has, you know, really had a clear goal of trying to make things equitable, please, which takes staff. But I, I, I guess I'd like to see, like, I mean, not, not right now or next week, a real analysis of like, can we really not do it? I mean, can we really not do it? Would it be at the cost of a math six plus teacher? I'm not asking again to answer right now, but, you know, we do have students that are interested in math and demographics aside, you know, we need to be encouraging them. At the same time, like, I realize that our focus on equity has, may have a cost and this may be, I just, I just don't know. But I, I will say that when we talked about deep tracking, we did have a lot of parents, many of whom are Asian, who were very unhappy about it and that's because these parents, I mean, we're stereotyping here, but many of the, the folks who are not happy were Asian and, you know, their kids placed a high priority on achievement, academic achievement and STEM achievement. And, you know, we want to just make sure, we want to always make sure we're being welcoming of them as well.
Yeah, I do want to say, oh, sorry, I just want to say that I really, while I understand where Christina and Dr. Nikos is coming from, the part of the conversation was about making sure that we're providing, expanding access to math for all students, that's the way I thought of it, because I really have a hard time with this conversation being equity versus access to higher level math for students who, you know, who students who want it. So I think we're, you know, we really need to be careful about making this a conversation that pits a focus on equity against a focus on making sure that students who want to achieve at higher levels of math have opportunities to do that. Because to me, it's, it's not an either or, we need to, we need to be doing both. And it's not like we necessarily have to sacrifice that kind of access because we're focused on, focusing on equity. So I just want to kind of, you know, put that out there so we're really being careful not to, in my mind, misrepresent what equity really means.
On the other hand, I can see that, you know.
I could see why people would, of course.
No, no, but I mean, I, I think, I think it's, it's partly true. I mean, I, no, we don't want to be like, you know, no, this doesn't serve our equity goals and so we're going to throw it out, which I'm not saying Christina did, but, you know, we don't want that, that to be perceived as our line of thinking. But at the same time, there are costs, you know, if we want to create better access, that means that some students may need more support. And that costs money and that costs staff, so I, I certainly recognize that even if the, if the issue is access, not equity, there may be a trade off, staff and time wise. But I, I, I hope that when there's no sense that we're sort of like thinking, thinking about ruling it out because of, it doesn't meet our equity goals, you know what I mean? And maybe I'm saying what Monique said. But I bet I want, and I also want to welcome, you know, everybody in the community to, you know, as a stakeholder.
And yeah, we want to, we want to provide, provide the best education for, for all. I think that's, that is the goal and maybe Christina, you can kind of take a look at that and kind of report back on some of these issues. Okay, or, or report maybe to curriculum first, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, let's. Sorry, I think Monique, we're putting you back up, back up because you're doing.
Oh, yes, okay, let me pull up Equity and Excellence.
We're making you work hard tonight, thanks.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so Equity and Excellence met on January 13th and we, let's see, our first item was an update. Well, our first, first item was tabled for our next meeting, we were going to get an update on the ELA Language Group Meeting, but that meeting had to be rescheduled, so we will hear back from them in a future meeting. Then Dr. Nikosia gave us an update on the Discipline Study Group Meeting. That group met earlier that day on January 13th. Slightly smaller number of, because of course, we're living in the time of quarantining and, and absences and so forth. So slightly smaller number than normal for that meeting, but the Bartle and middle school staff was well represented there. Marilyn and Christina both provided an overview of that discussion, which I'll try to briefly summarize here. Some of the main concerns identified by staff really were, the main concern was just around the fact that their staff is seeing an increase in discipline and behavior issues at middle school in Bartle. Particularly, you know, kind of with, with the subset of the student population, so small numbers of students, but again, repetitive behavior issues and there has been certainly a significant rise since the return to school. Staff has reported that their efforts are not having an impact on this kind of small subset of the student body. Students are needing more support than they have needed in the past, these are some of the observations that staff made at that meeting. At Bartle specifically, kids seem to be having a hard time developing friendships more than they have in the past, which is leading to conflict naturally. So, you know, thinking about conflict resolution, problem solving was a part of the discussion and building up those skills. Middle school, there's a conversation about the disconnect between home and school and just the need to kind of figure out ways to reengage families and reconnect families and children back to the school and with each other. And they talked about restorative and discipline should be working in conjunction and then there's some concerns about restorative work and the discipline work, not necessarily integrating and working well at this point. So again, issues that are going to have to be further, I think, addressed in upcoming Discipline Study Group Meetings. Tracy Maiden, who was working on discipline and Tara Young is working jointly on that SEL and, and communication. They're communicating together across the schools to try to address these issues and support staff and students. Bartle, we talked about the fact that a factor here is that Bartle only has one school counselor for 400 plus students. And, you know, the fact that there is certainly a need for additional counseling support and how we may need to really take that up as a board in terms of that human resource need. Then we discussed the SEL lab, which has been an important resource for sure at Bartle, but there is a stigma associated with it, that it exists only for students who need mental health support. And that students refer to SEL lab because they have a quote problem. So staff is, you know, really working on ways to de-stigmatize SEL lab so that more students participate. And that led to a conversation about the possibility of a more push-in model for SEL, so that it becomes more integrated into classrooms. And I know Dr. Nikosia at the time was going to follow up on that idea and you already did in the email, which I should have updated here, but you did follow up that there is going to be SEL lab push in to the classroom. So we'll look forward to hearing an update on that and how that is working. Then we talked about, again, the SEL workshops that are already discussed in curriculum, curriculum instruction. Then our next item was an update on the AP Honors Accessibility Committee work. That committee was supposed to meet, their meeting had to be rescheduled, but the counselors did report to Christina that they had all the students or all the students will be taking a characteristic inventory that not only allows them to determine their strengths and interests, but also, you know, helps teachers to identify students who may be looking like they are ready to take more challenging courses or courses they may not even realize that they, you know, kind of have this talent or strength and interest in. So again, this is high school level, all students will be given time to complete the inventory during a required class. Due to legal requirements, teacher recommendations will continue to be allowed for students whose educational programs are IP driven. But other than that, teacher recommendations will no longer be required for students to take a AP or honors course. Students will have the opportunity to discuss their interests, so when they identify an interest in honors or AP course, they can access the supports that they need. So we really, you know, talked about the need to make sure those supports are boosted. And then Dr. Nikos just reported that the, the meeting will talk about marketing. In the next meeting, they'll talk about marketing, student support, promoting a culture of growth mindset and what will be the metrics for success in this new expanded access to higher level courses. And then the next item we discussed, grading and instruction during COVID. And this was sort of an item we added to the agenda in light of the, you know, current mode of sort of remote hybrid instruction that's being provided. We talked about the need for guidance and support for teachers as well as obviously supports for students. And Christina was able to update us on the fact that leadership team would be discussing ways to tighten up expectations during times when students are zooming into class due to the quarantine and perhaps access issues that may need to be addressed during this time. Christina's also talked about meeting with the leadership team to discuss ways to help teachers, you know, again, work through challenges and issues with supporting students who are quarantining and, and needing access to classroom instruction. And then talked about alleviating final grading pressure. As we talked about, the grading deadlines will be extended for middle and high school, so leaving, alleviating some of that pressure from the teachers. And then, last but certainly not least, the policies in need of review from the audit, very similar to curriculum instruction. All the policies are pretty straightforward, nothing major there to report except for, again, the need to go ahead and get that screening for dyslexia policy updated or, yeah, adopted. And then I guess I should go ahead and read the item that will be moving, which is the resolution to teach on the comprehensive teaching of US history in the United States. I'll pull that up because I know we're going to be moving. Okay, here we go. So we discussed this, we've been having discussions about the need to, you know, given the moment that we're in, you know, and this national, you know, coordinated effort to essentially abolish the teaching of truthful, comprehensive history of our, of our country and our histories in schools and certainly the chilling impact that this is having on school boards and educators, which has been all over the news. You know, Equity and Excellence discussed the importance of really just affirming what we're already doing, right? Affirming the district's commitment to teaching the complicated, full and accurate history of the United States, the good, the bad, you know, the horrible, all of it. So we drafted the resolution to do just that and as was mentioned in a previous board meeting, Equity and Excellence drafted the resolution, then kicked it over to Curriculum Committee for input. And so with that background, I'll just go ahead and read the resolution that we'll be voting on. Whereas the Highland Park Board of Education believes that it is the responsibility of the Highland Park Public Schools to provide all students with the highest caliber education that prepares them to critically develop skills and habits of mind that prepares them to ask and answer society's hardest questions, become future leaders and contribute to a flourishing pluralistic society. Whereas the Amistad Bill A1301, which became law in 2002, requires New Jersey schools to provide an accurate, complete and inclusive history through the infusion of the history of Africans and African Americans into the social studies curriculum. Whereas Bill A-4454/S-2781, which was signed into law in March 2021, requires New Jersey school districts to include instruction on diversity and inclusion as part of this New Jersey Student Learning Standards beginning in the 2021, 2022 school year. Whereas the Highland Park Board of Education believes that the study of history should include both celebration and questioning of aspects of our past in classrooms where diverse perspectives, dialogue, debate and study are valued and all students feel welcomed and loved. Now therefore be it resolved that one, the Highland Park School District will educate its students on the importance of a comprehensive and truthful understanding of US history, including the role of race, racism and other forms of systemic discrimination and oppression in shaping who we are as a nation, nation. And be it further, that two, the Highland Park School District will seek local, statewide and national programs that support teachers' professional development and the critical teaching of the United States history to develop mastery of content, to be prepared to facilitate difficult dialogue and to access available supports. And be it further, three, that the Highland Park School District will support efforts by educators to provide developmentally appropriate instruction about social injustice and discrimination in all its form with regards to differences in race, ethnicity, culture, gender, gender expression, age, appearance, ability, national origin, language, spiritual belief, sexual orientation and socioeconomic circumstance. Advocate for equitable schooling practices that reinforce student dignity and success and voice opposition to policies that may reinforce inequitable learning opportunities or outcomes for our diverse student body.
Thank you, thank you, Monique. Both the report and the reading of the resolution, which we will come back to, to vote on. Comments and questions, Mark?
Yes, I, I just wanted to say that with Michelle out this evening, she had a death in her family, so we're missing her. Michelle has been talking about this topic since I've been on the board, which is more than five years now. And I'm so happy we're doing it, but also I want to recognize her in addition to the work Monique has put in and, and the rest of the board, that Michelle has really worked hard to put, move, move this kind, this resolution forward. So thanks, thank you, Michelle as well.
Yeah, and I would say that, you know,
Yeah, and I would say that, you know, it's something that we should try to share, you know, throughout the county and state as well. It's really important. I mean, I just saw today a dear friend of mine who's, you know, uh also kind of an education policy wonk. Put out on Twitter that a Florida, like a Florida Legislative Committee just put forward a bill. That they're calling the Don't Say Gay Bill. So, you know, my friend, you know, put it on Twitter like you didn't think they were gonna stop and see RT, did you? You know, like, so it's this kind of, it it's just gonna keep going, you know? It so it's it's really important to kind of like, you know. Put our uh dig in our heels and say, heck no. So thanks to Monique and uh Michelle for working on this.
While I was reading it, I will just say that I'm thinking about Rob's comment. Because we did, we did foreground this with the bills that are currently that we had at the time and. I don't know, I'm wondering if we should, even though as comprehensive as this was, uh we did state two bills specifically related to D and I, the. Diversity and inclusion and uh you know, racism and and importance of teaching African and African American history. And I'm wondering if we do. Need to go ahead and add in the latest um bill on AAPI history. I'm totally for that, you know, again.
We have another meeting in just a couple of weeks. It wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be the end of the world to just hold it for now, add in another whereas and.
Yeah, I think we should. Um.
I agree with you, Monique. I think we should table it till next meeting.
Just for that purpose, Scott. Any other discussion or questions or thoughts on it, though? But that is one that I do feel like we need to go ahead and address. Thank you for bringing that up, Rob.
Yeah, and it kind of gives it um, you know, that extra reason to then circulate it, you know?
Yeah, yep, absolutely.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna table the actual voting on that. Let the committee take one more stand, another stand, okay? Anything else on those topics? Otherwise, we're gonna move on to finance and facilities and Mark?
Marilyn, thank you. So the Finance and Facilities Committee met on January eleventh. We reviewed um the audit. We did the audit of the twenty-four policies appropriate to finance and facilities. Uh by reading through them and finding anything old or wrong or whatever. Um and moving forward. We discussed the track and field and lighting update at the middle high school complex. The um the borough and the district will be co-funding this. Uh the base amount will be seven hundred fifty thousand dollars uh in a state grant that the borough. Received uh was receiving. Um and then the rest will be split between the uh Board of Education and the borough. And we have put money aside over the years for the mu- for this purpose. So that's one um small glitch that we're doing it not alone, but with an with the borough and means we have to meet with them. We have to discuss it with them, figure out all of the uh work we have to do. We're also going to be using a um state-approved co-op vendor. Uh and that saves time and it saves money. Um but this work, especially since the lighting uh uh contractor. Uh that we want to use uh will have to be uh taken on by that co-op vendor. The estimate is a end of May. We will, when the fields aren't being used and track isn't being used, middle to end of May, perhaps into early June, is when we'll start. And that'll go over the summer. So during the summer, uh the track, field and lighting will be updated. Chris brought up the issue of lights and people's houses. And meeting with the vendors to make sure that we're lighting the field, we're lighting the stands, but we're not lighting people's houses all of the time. So uh in their backyards. So that was discussed. And uh Linda and Mike O'Donnell are on on the scene and working on this. The Bartle and Irving playgrounds uh are being reviewed as well. Our Irving is a much easier job because the ground is level. There's a playground there. It's uh pretty consistent. So it's gonna be likely much less expensive, much easier to do, whereas Bartle, the land is very uneven. There's the baseball field. Uh and there's this, this uh very, very uneven surfaces. Uh so um much more complex plan, probably much more expensive, uh but both of those will be done. Uh and uh a part, a good part of this, if not all, will be done, or most of all, will be done with the various ESER and ARP funds. We had a report, an update from Linda on the audit report, which is had been ongoing with our uh auditors. Uh the district is in reasonably good shape. We can fully fund. The amounts we allocated in June for capital reserve, maintenance reserve, emergency reserve. Um and still have funds to increase our allowable free balance. Um including uh the state allowing us to go from two percent to four percent allowable free balance. Uh due to COVID, which means we may have more of a cushion than we've ever had in my uh tenure on on the school board. Uh spanning thirty thirty odd years. And so that we are in reasonable good, reasonably good financial shape, including that the money for the athletic fields is already taken out of that. Um so so that's the Finance Committee report. And before I go through the agenda items, I guess I should ask if anyone has any questions. And I did send a report out to the board uh right after we met. Okay, seeing none, I'll try to briefly go through the uh Finance and Facilities Agenda. Items one through um items one through five are the usual bill lists and cafeteria bill list. Item six is travel and related expense reimbursements. There's an error or change on the uh attached report. Uh the first three items are listed as having the date of um January fourteenth. They should actually have the date of that visit for February eighth. So Linda, if you can take note of that, that's what we'll be moving uh on on the travel reports. We have a number of contractors for professional services. We have Martin Blank Consulting. These are consulting typically around training we're doing. Uh including uh uh to staff, to parents, uh virtual workshops. Uh so we have Martin Blank Consulting. Um in January, we have the Transgender Training Institute. In February. We have social work PRN uh providing us a licensed clinical social worker for um February first through June seventeenth. Uh we have Bright Star Care providing us with a registered nurse. Uh we have John Kamigno Esquire Virtual Workshops on Sec- Section Five oh four and IDEA. And we have Center for Responsive Schools um coming in to talk about elementary core courses. Um in June, I think that must be for a a teacher workshop. I'm I'm assuming. I didn't, I didn't check, but that's what I assume that's for. Number eight is the approval of five-year preschool program and plan update and submission of the plan to the state as we do every year. Or every some number of years. Uh I guess a five-year program, so it's every five years. We have approval of bedside instruction for a student at the Rutgers University uh uh Health University Behavioral Healthcare. System uh effective December first, uh twenty first, excuse me. Uh we have the acceptance of a donation of a baby grand piano. Thank you, Debbie Alexander. For an Otto Ottenberg piano valued at five thousand dollars to the high school music program. And again, uh thank you. We have approval to approve, uh to increase flood insurance. Um in the storm a couple of months ago, there was the beginnings of flood coming into one of our basements. And our um uh for for uh only only seven thousand four hundred dollars, we can up our flood insurance coverage from a million to five million. Um and we do know that one of the school districts in Middlesex County, um perhaps Ocean County, but I think it was Middlesex. Had massive flooding, uh which they can barely cover and pay for, and the school was down and out. So this seemed like a very good idea in our last Finance and Facilities meeting. There's approval of proposals for installation of a water heater, numbers twelve and thirteen. Uh General Plumbing Supply will be installing a replacement water heater for Bartle School costing thirteen thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. It's unanticipated. Approval of spa- safety inspections for the high school auditorium for the ho- a hoist. That's gonna cost the thirty-nine hundred dollars. Approval of a lawn tractor at a cost of fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-six cents. Uh this is reimbursed by Italian Global Services by our equipment allotment in our contract with them. Um number seventeen is approval of an addendum to the contract for source for teachers. Christina, I assume that's for the uh increase in pay for substitutes. Very difficult to get substitute teachers, substitute paraprofessionals. Um it's difficult to get teachers. Period. Um so we're upping our rates slightly and hopefully we'll do better than we've done and also better than other districts. And then uh the last item is the um acceptance. Of an assistance grant from the National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance. To fund the purchase of a food warmer and refrigerator for the kitchen at Highland Park High School. Um and a word on teachers. Um uh one of the things I want to be preparing for the board over the next month or so. Is a resolution to bring to the New Jersey School Boards Association on the abolishment of the EDTPA. As a requirement for students uh going on to uh college, in college, getting education degrees. Programs all over the state at the college/university level are losing teachers. It's expensive. It's time-consuming. Uh New New York is abolishing it. Other states have abolished it. Uh it makes becoming a teacher much less friendly. Uh so while I mentioned seemed like a good place, while I mentioned how difficult it is for us to get substitutes. Part of the reason for that is how difficult it is for programs in the state at all of the universities and colleges to. Uh 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 educate and then graduate students in education. So let's have our lobbying body in the NJSBA take that to the state legislators, legislators. And let's get rid of that requirement if possible. So that's my report. Any questions, comments?
Just yay on the last point.
Hey, right.
I second that. As someone who recently had to do an EDTPA, I can tell you, it does not really add much to practice. So please, any lobbying abilities you have. I think that's a good move.
Well, as many of you know, my 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 wife Nora was the chair of a uh education division at a college and. They were very hard hit because they they um they um serve a community of first-time college students from. Often from families with not a lot of money and they lost potential teachers who couldn't afford to take. All of the parts of the EDTPA money going into Pearson or someone else's pocket. And um that program suffered, but programs like Princeton suffered. They lost half their education majors. Rutgers has suffered. Every s- every school in the in the state has suffered. So it'd be very, very good to um make those tests go away.
And Mark, you know, our our state senator, um Senator Diagnan would be an amazing ally on that. You know, he's got a daughter who's a teacher and he is very, very sympathetic to our issues. So, you know, that's something I'd be more than happy to um. Address with him directly.
Fantastic. I'll try to put something together, uh if not for the next meeting, for the meeting after uh in the end of February. I don't remember when the NJSBA meeting is, but um uh it would definitely be something. If i- if not there, uh to get to Senator Diagnan and some of the other legislators. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um personnel, Chris?
Uh yeah, so we we met on uh January tenth and uh we discussed the uh. Director of Ed Services Search. I understand we're gonna have some news about that soon from Dr. Nikosia. So I'll just go to the agenda items. The one through six are the substitute teachers and various leaves. Seven and twelve are are uh resignations for reasons of retirement. So we'd like to uh thank Ms. Bukowski and uh Per Professional and Madame Havas, uh for sort of for say. Uh for their service. Items uh eight, eight through eleven are various kinds of uh resignations. So thanks to. Sriggo and Sakalakalas, Saka, yeah, Sakalakalas. Jean Bart and Honoray. Then uh there're very various things for uh. Approval of swimming chaperone is fifteen. Uh outside events, technology technician is sixteen. Seventeen and eighteen, contact tracing and extra hours for secretarial staff. Uh curriculum writing uh is is nineteen, twenty is professional development. Uh twenty-one, uh twenty-two counselors, extra positions. Temporary pay and uh professional workshop on on grading reform is is twenty-four. Twenty-five or some uh additional uh assignments. Uh twenty-six and twenty-seven are um just in case we need them, we're approving ahead of time. Some uh assignments to for for staff to serve as home instructors. Or uh extra comp- compensation in in item twenty-seven for the paraprofessional staff. I think that's it.
Sorry, I was muted. Any uh questions uh for personnel, for Chris? Seeing none, uh policies and regulations, Dorsey? Everybody's talking about policy as they do their individual report. What do you have to add?
Well, I have next to nothing to add to that. It's all thanks to like the super heroic efforts of uh Christina. Who just has taken policy on and has tamed it. It's like, it's a glorious thing to watch. Uh we've been behind for so long that it was really, really daunting. And Christina was. She was not, she was undaunted. Is that even a word? I don't know. Did I make that up? Christina just completely got it under control, which is great. Um so we have three policies this time for first reading and one A through S for second reading. Um and then as multiple other committee chairs noted, we had a number of uh a number of policies that were for review. Uh Finance and Facilities went through some policy unfortunately was not able to meet that week, completely my fault. Um due to some health issues. And actually, I need to, I'll send you guys an email. The next one's, the next date that we have slated is gonna be a problem too, so. You know, but you guys can most likely go go forward with that without me. So yeah, if anybody has any questions or concerns about the three that we have for first reading that we haven't looked at yet, um just let um Christina and myself know. And otherwise, that's about all I've got. And we'll just wait for the next, uh we'll just wait for that next alert to come out. So uh we have more to do. But, you know, I'm just so hi- happy that now we have a real um process in place that works, that divvies everything out. You know, divides up the work between committees. It just makes everything go so much um more smoothly and more quickly. And, you know, there's no sense in every board member going through every, you know, every policy. Through every last word. It's a lot. It's a heavy lift. Our policy manual is gigantic. We're all volunteers. Ain't nobody got that kind of time. So, you know, dividing it up by committees really does help with that. And Allison, if you have any, you know, I know as a new board member, it's sometimes very hard to wrap your head around like what the process is or what the heck are we doing? Or feel free to reach out to me anytime if you have any p- policy questions. I'm more than happy to to chat with you anytime about this scintillating, scintillating part of the work that we do.
Thank you very much, Dorsey. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Any questions or comments for Dorsey? Okay. Question on process, we remind me, we now go back and and vote on for each of these agenda items? That's next, okay?
Yeah, is there not a public clue? Is there not a public comment first? Usually we have public comment in between. No, we didn't do that?
We have public comment before the committee reports and then before adjournment.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, so make sure, um, so for curriculum and instruction, um. Monique, we actually didn't go over those agenda items?
Yes, I stepped in and I omitted an important part of what Michelle would have.
Moving thing, so.
No, I'm not, so uh, do, do I need to go back over? And what's on that or do I go ahead and just move, okay? Um, so I moved that the Board of Education accepted recommendation to approve bill trips um as attached.
And there are also the.
Hold on, pulling that up, sorry, okay, and the second item, approval of HIB reports. Uh, and we have uh one, two, three, four, five, six HIB reports uh for the month of Jan, December. And then three, we have approval of university graduates or students for teaching internships and the junior practicum observation. Moving that uh, the student can improve the following university graduate students for teaching internships, a whole bunch of those. And then for approval of the school counselor, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school counselor practicum student for the community teen center. And high school counseling department, um, and that's uh one person there. And that is it.
But I, I want to just comment that I think it's, I think I said this to Dr. Nicosia, it's amazing that we have so many student teachers and practicum junior field people. Going to be the district, it just gives us a natural um group of pe- group of teachers, future teachers hopefully that we can then draw on as we need new teachers, so I think it's great that we have this long list.
Their records proximity.
Yeah, I'm impressed they have this many teachers in their program, honestly. Moment. So do we just go ahead and move you, just want to move the for approval, items one through?
Yes, I want to move items one through four.
Second.
Linda, do we do a roll call for that?
Ms. Casal Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Gowan, Ms. Gowan? You're muted. Ms. Gowan, you're muted.
Sorry, oh, oh. I'm sorry, I had the hard mute switch on, I didn't realize, uh, yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, and uh equity and excellence, we're tabling that for next time.
Uh, we need a motion to table it.
Oh, sorry about that.
Okay.
Does that need to come from me or does it matter? Might as well, yeah, I am muted, um, so motioning to table the um resolution on teaching of the full and comprehensive history of the United States.
Second. Sorry, Ellen.
It's okay. Okay, um, Ms. Casal Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
And moving on to uh finance facilities?
Yes, thank you, Marilyn, I'd like to move items one through eighteen.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Casal Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
And moving on to personnel and communication. Chris, do you want to make the move?
Yeah, could I, uh, like to move items one through twenty-eight?
Second.
Second.
Ms. Casal Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
And policies?
Uh, yes, I'd like to uh move items one through three.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Casal Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we move on to board liaison reports. If, uh, first if anybody has gone to any meetings, you know, raise your hand and let us know and share what you've got. Um, before we do that, I did want to thank, um, we had a couple of openings that need to be filled and Chris. Thanks so much for taking on um our booster athletic boosters group, appreciate that and um. Allison um is taking on education foundation, so Rob Magaziner's groups are covered and you can reach out and talk to him for any information. Um, reports, Chris, did you want to say something on one of your?
Yeah, so, so we had a, a, a board of health meeting. Uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, you know, ma- many of the concerns were similar to the concerns that Clara and, and uh Rob Scott raised. About uh availability of rapid antigen tests, availability of KN ninety-five masks, the importance of boosters and things like that. So c- could I ask Dr. Nicosia to maybe address some of those, I mean, it's roughly along the lines of Rob's questions, but. Sort of in, in, in general, address some of those issues. I, I, I know I've, you, I know I've seen bunch, you know, hundreds of antigen tests in your office, right? Do we have any issues getting those?
So um, we had, and all the antigen tests that we purchased, we've uh administered through to, to students. Uh, to staff and then um athletic students in, in need of athletics uh during the time where testing was, was problematic. My understanding that PCR testing is back to, back to. A good position of twenty-four to thirty-six hour turnaround and we have Void Pharmacy coming on Tuesdays to provide testing. The issue we're having is that not a lot of people are taking advantage of it, which is what we had in the beginning of the year with Ridwood Labs, so. Anybody listening to me, please take advantage on Tuesdays to come to Void Pharmacy at the high school to get tested and then um the. Uh, other healthcare provider that came to do the drive-through walk-up testing um is available to do that again as well, um.
What, what about the antigen test, do we have more of them?
Uh, so we gave out all that we have.
Have we, have we ordered more or?
At this point, I'm not ordered anymore.
Um, what about the KN ninety-fives, I mean, I, I think you, you changed the safety plan to say that uh we were purchasing KN ninety-fives from now on?
Do we, do we? Any new, any new mask that we will order would be KN ninety-five, so we placed an order for staff. Uh, some, some adult masks and some, some youth masks as well, um, I know Linda, hopefully and Brooke Baldzzone are working on that through the use of, of S R funding, but we ha- we have to go through, get some competitive bids and. And figured out how many, how many we needed, so we, we ordered, I don't know the numbers, I'd have to follow up with Ms. Baldzzone, but we ordered enough so that. Um, any staff that wants it, um, they're available, uh, same thing with, with students, so anybody that, that wants them will, will make them available to them.
It, but what, what about right now, are they?
No, we have to wait for them to come in because we don't order them and then wait. Yeah, we, I mean, they're available, but I just have to wait for them to, to be delivered to us. So I'm, I'm not sure of the status of the purchase order, if it went through the, I, I don't, I, because I didn't place that order, I don't know the timetable on, on uh when they're going to deliver them.
Right, g- given that the CDC has updated its guidance about mask type.
Hmm.
Uh, would it be possible to have a mandate for, you know, something better than something, a T-shirt over your mouth? I mean, it, you know, I mean, let, let's, let's hope that case levels would get super low so that we wouldn't need masks at all, but let's say that doesn't happen. Yeah, in, in, in a situation where we would need masks or, you know, let's say the next wave in December. Uh, can we have a mask mandate which mandates some level of quality?
That's something we can bring up to the central leadership team for discussion. I don't see how you would though, I mean, I mean, I, if someone wants to wear KN and F, and ninety-five or an N ninety-five, that's. Absolutely, you know, I mean, I think, I, I can't imagine that the, the schools are letting kids come in with bandanas wrapped around their head, I mean, I've certainly not seen. Anything like that when I'm, you know, picking up or dropping off or, you know, seeing kids walk around even. Um, for a lot of people, I mean.
Well, I, I'm not sure the evidence for a, of a cloth mask is really much different than the evidence for effectiveness of a bandana?
But I don't think many people are even wearing cloth masks anymore, I mean, I think surgical masks have kind of become the.
Right, yeah, but I'm, I'm just wondering.
More than cloth masks.
I'm, I'm just gi- given, you know, wondering that, you know, given that there are people who are vulnerable in the school who want to come back to school. You know, is, is it possible to make, you know, some standard of mask uh a requirement?
Yeah, I know my predecessor had tried with the gray mask that we purchased, that everybody wear the, those, they, and that was not. A successful endeavor, doesn't mean we couldn't try again, but those are conversations that um I'd like to have with my leadership team and with the central leadership team. Um, because that, that, there's a, a myriad of, of factors to consider when requiring. A certain type of mask, which is ensuring that all students have it, that it's, you know, on and um I will say if it. The, the money, so it costs, it would cost about, I think we estimated about anywhere, Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, thirty or forty thousand dollars a month. For everybody to get the disposable KN ninety-fives, so that would be per month that we would have to spend on masking alone, um, you know. In addition to all the other things that we have to spend that, that federal money on, you know, filter, changing filters and, and things like that, so. I, I agree, I think there's a lot of value to it, but I, the mandate of it. Um, again, is part of a larger conversation that I would want to make sure that I have collectively with um.
Well, I, I understand it's part of a larger conversation, but I'm asking, what are the main obstacles to doing that?
The, the. I had my hand raised just because I'm thinking the obstacle that popped in my mind is just. The cost factor and the fact that they cost more, so for some families, it's just not going to be uh so easy to, to have, now I'm fully in support of wearing KN. Ninety-five or high quality mask, but if we're going to make it a mandate, you better be prepared to be able to provide them and unfortunately. Um, as you said, underfunded public schools. Um, are in a situation where we can't even provide the safest possible mask for all.
But, but just like, the, the, the cost of a surgical mask is just five or ten cents per, per mask. I, I can't imagine that, that say mandating a surgical mask standard would be a significant cost.
Oh, I'm ta- so are you talking, so you're saying like a KN ninety-five or N ninety-five or is that what you mean when you say surgical?
Well, some, some, some standard, I'm not necessarily specifying.
Okay, well, because from what I heard, the some standard actually in terms of what is really being recommended now is pretty clear. KN ninety-five, N ninety-five, and then the N ninety-four S or something, I, I don't know the number there. So I'm not hearing surgical masks as being on that same level, but when I, when I hear high quality, I'm thinking of those three and there is certainly more than a ten cent. Um, call or whatever sent cost difference, so again, all for it, but you know, we better be able to.
Listening is the surgical mask provides something like four times as much protection as a cloth mask and the, and the KN ninety-five or FFP. You know, gives you something like ten times, I mean, just very roughly speaking, uh, ju- I don't want to take too much time, but the, the other concern that the uh came up at the. Health board meeting was just, do we have any data about boosters? Um, I think we discussed this at a previous meeting, right?
Yeah, we discussed it at the Personnel Committee meeting and so what I did is I put out um. A uh update through our uh human resource uh module to collect anybody who has uh booster information to, to report it. Um, please note to anyone listening that it is not required by the state, so I cannot require it until the state tells me that I can require it. Um, so we did put it in as an option. Um, so I can pull a report shortly, I still have people, even as today, still posting their booster information, so. Um, I want to give staff time to upload it to our system and then I could pull a report to show um what of the uh staff members have voluntarily. Provided the information for their booster shots.
Okay, thank you.
And some, and something else, I just want to make a note of the superintendents met um with the um. You know, Middlesex Department of Health and with the NJ ASA Legal Council in talking about the re- the recommendations that are coming from the Department of Health because. You know, there's a lot of things that the districts are facing. Sort of with the long haul of this and, and that it's not seeming to go away. Um, is that there are the, the, the things that come out through the New Jersey Department of Health are recommendations, they're the gold standard, so everything in that. Document that they keep pushing out almost weekly now with updates are the gold standard and what they say is that anything in there. Should be implemented, if you're going to implement any of the gold standard things, you need to implement them with fidelity. And the Department of Health is saying, if you cannot implement them with fidelity, then it's okay to not implement them at all. So they're not absolute must-have requirements, the only must-have requirements are the executive orders by the governor of New Jersey. So just, you know, something to, to think about that we'll bring to central leadership team as we talk about ways to sort of live in this world. Um, as our, which I hate to use this term, new normal, uh, but ways, ways that, you know, we are implementing things with fidelity, how can we better implement things with fidelity? And if we can't implement it with fidelity, what can we do instead? Go ahead, Ann.
Can I just ask, um, that at the central leadership team where you take up the question of masks, um, I know you said thirty to forty thousand dollars. I assume that, that is to buy everyone in the school a disposable KN ninety-five or N ninety-five mask, that's what you were talking about with the.
Yes, that would be, I think it was, we decided three per week, per person, that then the expectation is they use them on a rotating basis, so they'd have to be. Good at rotating them and numbering them to rotate them through, um, through all of them, yes.
I was, I was hoping that one other option could be the cost of providing surgical masks to those who don't, aren't wearing them, in other words.
That, we do that already, we, we've been purchasing since the beginning of all this as, as what we hand out.
Well, could we require those and to have those available and sufficient number to hand out, I mean, I assume that wouldn't be thirty to forty thousand dollars.
We, again, I have to say, I'd have to take it up with the central leadership team in terms of.
That's what I was asking, yeah.
In need of it, maybe a, a little bit uh cumbersome, again, you have to understand that it's, I'm not, I'm, I'm not disagreeing. With the efficacy of these things and the importance and value of it. What I want to make sure is that everybody on the leadership team and our central leadership teachers, that we're all on the same page because it's one thing to say it, it's another thing to implement it and live it. Um, you know, I want to move, I want to continue moving the district to, to continue all the great things that we're doing. And if we're, if we're just masked police all day or, or whatever those things are, it just makes our jobs a little bit more difficult to do all the wonderful things that we want to implement too. So again, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be doing those things, it just all has to be part of a larger conversation on what, what we can actually implement with fidelity.
And my, my thought about the math is you guys are already masked police unfortunately, which really stinks, um, so this would be the kind of mask. Um, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I hear you saying you're the professional, that that would be a significant increase in the amount of policing that would have to happen. I don't know, I, I, I hope that you guys will consider the surgical mask option, um, I, I also, this, doing things with fidelity, I mean, normally, I, I believe that for a lot of sort of. Educational initiatives, but with mask wearing, the more good masks you got, the better, so if it's not a hundred percent, you know, compliance. Eighty percent is still better for infection control than a hundred, so, I don't know, I'd just ask you guys to consider that at the, when you have this larger conversation, please.
And I would second that too, I, I really think it's important to just provide the best quality mask that we can and knowing that there's still going to be some degree of. Um, not a hundred percent compliance in terms of wearing of those masks, um, certainly not putting additional burden on staff, but just at least providing higher quality masks.
Dorsey? Yeah, and just anecdotally, I wanted to add, you know, what I've seen, because I spend a lot of time in healthcare facilities these days. Is, you know, they did at Sloan start mandating, or not start mandating, they mandated staff to wear KN ninety-fives. And I've never seen the staff there look more miserable in my entire life, and these are people who are used to wearing masks on a regular basis, but asking someone to wear. Uh, surgical mask versus a KN ninety-five is a whole nother world and, you know, the important part is that someone wears something that they're comfortable with. And they're not fidgeting with, they're not taking, taking off their face and doing all of those kinds of things, but I do agree that if we could get, you know. When you walk in the door at Sloan now, if you have a cloth mask on, you're asked to put on a surgical mask, so that seems like the least thing that we can do is just. At the doors, if a kid walks in with a cloth mask, here you go, here's your mask for the day.
at the doors, if a kid walks in with a cloth mask, here you go, here's your mask for the day, you know. Um, that seems like it would be a relatively easy, relatively easy solution to get as many as many faces covered as as possible. But in terms of mandating the others, new. My opinion.
Chris, go ahead and then Allison.
Yeah, there there's one one question I just wanted to ask again, because uh i- i- are the, is the guidance in the road forward legally binding or not? Because y- you you talked about the new guidance from BOHH is just being guidance and not actually being legally binding. What what about the road forward guidance about the quarantining and stuff like that?
Yeah, the um if it has to do with anything um like uh that's already um legislation in law, for example, attendance and remote instruction and things like that, yes. Um, but in terms of like um contact tracing, socially distancing, but you can read that in the road forward, because the road forward says do as best as you can, if you can. So, yeah, there there is stuff in the road forward that is uh legally binding stuff, and then there's stuff that's sort of optional. Yep. Allison, go ahead.
Um, I totally understand the need for more uh better masks. But um when you discuss that with leadership team, have to really think about how you're going to enforce it. What are going to be the consequences if the kids aren't keeping their surgical masks on? Because I can tell you, cold parent. Does the parent have to pick them up? Do they have to learn on Zoom if they're refusing to wear a mask, but someone immunocompromised can't learn on Zoom, because they're not, you know, they're not allowed. So you have to really think of what the enforcement's going to be. What are going to be the consequences? How how far are you willing to go with that mandate?
I agree, but you know, we do already with that problem for a mask mandate. So it's, I mean, it's now it's a surgical mask mandate. I guess, I mean, I'm not sure that problem gets much worse than it already is. It's already a really, really annoying problem for teachers.
I get that, but the kids that you have right now who aren't wearing whatever mask they are supposed to wear are going to be the same kids that aren't going to wear the surgical mask. So my question is then what's the follow through?
What is it now? Yeah, oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, so it's part of the part of the, um, well, if they don't wear a mask at all, they're supposed to go home, but that uh following each building has a specific um in their student handbook, their code of conduct handbook uh that we equated to um address code violation and each he- each each building does it differently. That's developmentally um age appropriate. And also taken into consideration special education, because one one blanket rule doesn't work for all of our student populations.
Anything else? That was a long report, Chris.
Way to work stuff in.
Sneaky, yeah, I like it.
Oh, can I just throw in one last quick thing? I'm sorry. Christina, are we providing a way for parents to submit booster information as well? Because I have to admit, my kids are boosted, but I've been like, huh, like I haven't even submitted that yet and.
No, not yet, because Genesis hasn't pushed out an update to up, because that all is all coding in Genesis to update that information in the system. Um, and they haven't fixed that out yet.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other liaison reports? Hopefully shorter than Chris's just once.
I can add, since Mark had asked, since I'm a liaison to the delegate assembly, that uh the next one is going to be in May. Um, and that the resolution deadline uh is March tenth. So if we wanted to do something, we'd have to hustle. If you wanted to do it for the next one, if not, obviously, then there'd be the one in the fall. So there's the spring and then there's the fall and.
We can, we can do this.
I know you can, Mark. You can do anything.
I can. It's true.
Okay, um, if there are no other layers on reports, next on this agenda is the president's report. Um, I don't have a report. I did want to um thank everybody for uh Dr. Nikosia and and Mark and the other board members for the help you're getting me, giving me and supporting me in in this uh first month as president. I have been learning a lot. Um, and I'm sure I will continue to do that. Um, and my other thought, based on today's tonight's conversation, is that I'm really happy to see that even though we we're dealing with COVID and we're doing all the things we, you know, the discussions and so forth, we are actually talking about um social emotional learning and academics and um kind of getting back to the learning part of education. And I uh you know, I I I thank Dr. Nikosia for keeping us on track with that or getting us back on track with that in our conversations. Um, because it's hard not to just get lost and and the safety is obviously number one priority, but we're, you know, also want to be in the business of of teaching and and learning. So I'm glad we're able to do both. Um, and any old business, back to the agenda.
Oh, Linda, go ahead.
I just wanted to um remind the board members that I still need some documents back from the reorganization meeting. Um, oaths of office, acknowledgements of the code of conduct and ethics. Um, and also I wanted to uh give you all a heads up, you will be getting an email soon regarding completion of the online ethics and financial disclosure forms.
Yeah, worst, the worst programmed document in the history of the world.
Uh, well, we are stuck with whatever they give us.
We are, I know.
Um, but yeah, that'll be coming for all board members except for Ms. Cassal Dunn. Uh, they will be uh due, I think, in April. Uh, Ms. Cassal Dunn, because you are a new board member, you will have to have yours done uh by the end of February, but we'll walk you through it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, new business. Mark, you want to share with us? It's not necessarily new business, but you've you've been making me feel a little better as you talk about the numbers, uh COVID numbers in the county and the school and whatever. Um, you leave us with something positive here. We move on, we're gonna move on to public comment, of course, but.
Just briefly, I think we've had seven days of retransmission rate under one. Today was either point six three or point six two. I can't remember. Wait, I can look it up um in my spreadsheets. It was point six four, excuse me, but we've had seven days below one. Um, the average now, excuse me, the average now, uh, we haven't seen numbers, uh retransmission numbers like that in, I think, six months, maybe more. Uh, we, uh, the numbers are dropping every day. Uh, we had, as of yesterday's, uh, four thousand cases in the state. The day before was eight thousand. It was the Sunday and all, but still, we had eight thousand the day before. Um, two and a half weeks ago, we were averaging thirty thousand cases a day in the state. So the numbers, uh, as fast as they went up, they're starting to plummet. Um, if you have a boost, if you've had a booster or you've had even two two of if two shots, uh, the CDC is now putting out numbers that you're, I think, fifty times less likely to end up in a hospital, maybe it's forty times. Um, so I would encourage everyone, get your boosters if you haven't. Um, and uh, you're the similar numbers less likely to die from this if you've been boosted. So get your boosters, but the numbers are coming down so so very substantially. And um there's some hope. I I mean, I have some hope that this will start to be the, that this is the beginning of the end into an endemic like the flu. Uh, and we'll see. But yeah, I think it's kind of good news.
Yeah, well, thank you. Darcy, do you want to add something?
Yes, um, kind of following Marilyn, your comments about, you know, I was kind of getting back to a more normal where we're talking more about, you know, actually educating the kids as opposed to um the health crisis. Um, one thing I did notice with tonight's agenda, and you know, I know we've kind of gone back and forth with where public comment is and what public comment looks like and all that kind of stuff. One thing that I think is very important as we move forward is the reason we always had a public comment in between um us giving our reports and voting is because that gave the public the con- the opportunity before we voted to hear our discussion about the report and then for them to comment, give us comment on anything we may be about to vote on, right? Because we may have some like rich conversation about something and then somebody in the public would be like, hey, but wait, maybe you haven't thought about this. And it may change our, you know, the board's thinking before we vote. So it's important to have that public comment session, particularly at voting sessions in between the reports and when we vote. So I it was important to have move things before we did our, um, you know, before we did anything, because, you know, at one point we had such a voluminous number of people who wanted to talk to us. Um, but now we kind of really don't. Not that we can't leave that small one at the beginning, but again, I think it's important to have that one in between the reports and the voting. So.
So it's a better to move it, move the one that we have earlier to the in between.
Or, you know, you could potentially have, yeah, yeah, I mean, we can look at different ways of doing it, but, you know, I mean, what we used to do is we would have that first one in between the reports and the voting, and then if we saw a ton of people that needed to talk to us, then we would, you know, we would all vote to say, hey, let's let people talk to us before we, you know, before we get down to business.
Okay, all right. So let's talk about how we do it for next time.
Yeah.
Anything else? Then we move to our, uh, based on the way that's the uh agendas for tonight, we're moving to public comment. Um, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation. I have reserved this time for your comments. Board policies, oh, one, six, four, and oh, one, six, seven. Establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. And all the other uh con- statements that I made earlier, of course, apply to this uh uh public comment period as well. Um, uh, Rob Scott, if you want to unmute yourself.
Yes, my name's Rob Scott. I live at twenty-five South Second Avenue um in Highland Park. So I just going back, um, thanks to Chris Woodward for um asking some of the questions that I asked again. Um, we seem to have gotten a little bit of an answer. So I I think the answer to the very specific question, uh, how many rapid tests were ordered? I think the answer is a total of three hundred and seventy total. Um, there were three twenty that were were given out in sort of phase one before return to school in on January third, and then there was one more set of fifty given out. Um, at the last board meeting, Dr. Nikosia said she had ordered some tests before um break. Um, I guess that was the fifty that were given out. So only fifty were ordered. Um, so I I'm just going to observe that I I think um, this explains the unwillingness, unfortunately, um, of Dr. Nikosia to answer the question. Um, what was achieved by not answering that question was a was a big delay, right? A big delay in anyone from the community being able to say, would you please order more rapid tests? And we're back to this whole, we're going to do PCR testing. So again, PCR testing, there's a lag time. It's not useful in the same way that the rapid testing is. We've been over this territory before. We had the problem of people not taking advantage of it before. I would like to point out that the demand for rapid tests was very high. When the original three hundred and twenty were given out, they were gone nearly immediately, right? The last set of fifty that was given out, um, there was an email that they were available, and then a few hours later, there was an email that they were all subscribed. Uh, rapid tests can be used very, very differently in terms of um preventing um transmission change, because they're exactly that, they're rapid, they're in fifteen minutes. Um, and they can be given out on demand, right? And they can be given out to folks so that um they can keep it, right? And then when they wake up with that tickle in their throat, right, they can use the rapid test. Um, so the the deal here is, is that if the district spends a little bit of money, right? And doesn't order just three hundred and twenty or three hundred and seventy, right? But orders three thousand rapid tests. When you've got the money, you've got the money from the American Rescue Plan. And um if you do a bulk order, it's it's less money, right? Okay. Um, you can have those available, and that's an intervention, right, mitigation. It's a way of making the school safer, particularly by targeting their use during a search, right? And then you have a justification for schools are open and we want students to come in person. But if you refuse to do that, right, refuse to try and implement a mitigation like that, then you need to think of other options like for those of us who are immunocompromised, um, those of us who need it, you have to make available that virtual option, right? So give us the mitigation, do something that makes it safe, option A, right? Or option B, make available that virtual option, right? That seems like it should be fairly uncontroversial, right? But instead, we've had this long, you know, runaround, okay? So I would ask, Dr. Nikosia, order some masks, do two thousand this time, okay? Be uh or tests, right? Um, of course, now, you know, oh, the wave is cresting, right, you know, it's going down, right? The retransmission rate, that's great, it's all good news, right? But there's lots of people who still have Omicron, and when lots of people have it at the lower end retransmission rate, lots of people still get it. So we can expect, you know, maybe fifty, fifty-five, sixty percent who were going to get Omicron, right? They've gotten it, but we still have a lot more to go, right? The risks are still real. So if we had the tests right now, that school dashboard, which nobody I talked to trusts at all, would be a little more accurate, because people would have the capacity to test at home and to say what's really going on, right? Um, and then people who were positive wouldn't be coming into school, right? Okay, um, I've caught a bunch of cases, you know, in trying to protect my family and my kids with rapid tests from coming into my home, right? This is a useful thing, and I hope you guys will do it, right? And next time I get this runaround, oh, we'll tell you, we'll answer the questions, I'm going to be a lot more, you know, forceful about, come on, you got to give the answer right away, because, because we got played on this one, okay? Next, this whole discussion about the masks, right? This, I'm going to talk to the central leadership team about higher quality masks was what Dr. Nikosia said to Chris Woodward the last time he suggested higher quality masks. And I don't know if that was at the last board meeting. I think it was actually at one before that or one even maybe as far back as early December, maybe? I don't know, okay? Um, but we've had this discussion before. And here's the thing. Yeah, mandating it, let's, 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 okay, we don't mandate higher quality masks, okay? What we can do before getting to a mandate is we can provide them, right? And maybe we can't provide as many, maybe you can't afford to provide too many, although there is American Rescue Plan money and it's for that, right? Maybe you can't provide all the ones you would like, but you can provide some, right? And before you even get to the stage of providing it, you can just ask people to do it, right? And you can do things like, we're going to provide them to students who are on free introduced lunch, right? And you can request everyone else to buy them, right? You guys provide masks, my family's not going to use them, I'll buy them. Right? And lots of people are willing to do that. You can ask first. So ask people first to do that, because the N N ninety-fives, the KN ninety-fives, the KF ninety-four are much, much better than surgical masks. And surgical masks are better than the cloth masks, okay? So ask first, then provide them. If you can't provide a budget of thirty thousand a month, maybe provide a budget of thirty thousand a month for masks when case rates are super, super high and provide them then, right? Instead, I heard this bananas conversation, right? I heard things like, people in the hospitals are miserable wearing these masks. My girl's mom is a nurse. She wears that mask every day at work for twelve hours, and she's happy to wear that damn mask, okay? Because she's a healthcare worker and hasn't caught COVID. My sisters are nurses. They wear those masks every day at work. And they're not miserable, they're happy to be wearing the damn masks.
Hey, Rob, that was my own personal observation. And I've been in that hospital every three weeks for the last two and a half years. So, yeah, that was my observation. And no, they weren't mandated to wear KN ninety-fives until the last time I was there. They've been wearing surgical masks this whole time. So here, uh, people are entitled to other opinions other than yours, and other people can also be great, other than you.
Darcy, please, please, come on.
You're lecturing that.
No, no, please.
Meeting after meeting after thing, you don't really always need to be lectured at.
I just want to point something out. You guys are elected. You serve the public, okay? So when we get into this, who's lecturing who, please, please, please try to keep that in mind.
Keep what in mind?
I think it's a.
I'm well aware of what I'm elected to do. Thank you.
So to listen. So to listen, to be empathic.
You listen, Rob, we listen, meeting after meeting.
You listen and you, and, and we don't get answers.
You seem to now just be getting on to criticize people.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking for the same thing. And you guys know this because you've heard it over and over again. I'm asking for the same thing that I've asked for a long time ago, is some actual action to do something, to actually do an intervention, right? And we just had a very confused discussion about masks. A lot of things were brought in without like a clear, like, maybe we can at least ask people to wear them. Maybe we can provide some, right? And there are issues like, what is the budget available for masks and what are their benefits? And I think those issues are very, very central to the discussion that the board needs to have, right?
And what I heard is that Dr. Nikosia, who actually runs the board, but Rob, on some level, sometimes I think you have a misunderstanding of who runs the district. The board doesn't, Dr. Nikosia does. So what she said is that she, if you could just let me finish. What she said is she is going to bring her central leadership team, which is comprised of teachers and board members and people who actually are in the schools and have to put these things into practice. As, as Allison so eloquently said, right? We as board members sitting here can come up with all kinds of wackadoodle things, but we're not the people in the schools because we don't administrate them. And I'm sorry, Rob, I'm just, it's getting very frustrating when you just seem to.
You know, I'm really frustrated. I'm really frustrated that there's a three-minute public comment and that I, I kept to it. And I made my comments and I waited till the very end, right? And I, I kind of want to get the answers. And I wanted to have the opportunity to speak, right? And it's the elected officials speaking over the public. And yeah, the board oversees the superintendent. And what I'm saying is, the superintendent told everyone at a prior meeting, we're going to discuss the higher quality mask with the central leadership team. And now we're back to that again, okay? We don't have the prior report. And there's some very simple things that we could have asked, you know, what's the budget? What's the option A, B, C? What are the different budgetary options? What are the different levels of quality of masks? All of that stuff, we could have gotten into that, right? And they could have been ordered a long time ago, right? And we wouldn't be sitting here now, right? Having a discussion about, that, 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 that almost becomes moot because the next thing we're going to be told is, we can't get them in time, right? So if you don't want to do masks, if you don't want to do testing, right? If you don't want to like ramp up the contact tracing, right? If you don't want to do things that are proven interventions, if you don't want to put, um, improve ventilation, right? Do HEPA filters, do things like that. If you don't want to do that, okay? Or you can't do that, right? You can't afford it for whatever reason, okay? Then give us a virtual option. Instead, you took that away, okay? And so that's, I guess maybe that's my final question. Why is that taken away? What? And I suppose this has to be a question to Dr. Nikosia because she's the one that runs the district, right? Why have you taken that away? The long awkward pause is me trying to offer an opportunity for what I think is a reasonable question to be answered.
So let me, let me respond. So the Department of Education has clear and concise guidelines on what constitutes a day of instruction according to the attendance regulations. So that is all part of the school attendance, uh, registrar's manual that they give you. And so what the road forward and all of the guidelines are required about quarantine instruction for COVID positive or close contact related individuals. Unfortunately, the state has not given us any freedom or flexibility to offer virtual instruction for any other reason. All virtual instruction, in fact, I can't even close school for a snow day and offer virtual instruction. I have to provide, um, all, it has to be after three days of a state of emergency in which I can do that. All, anytime that I close school, all of that information has to go get approved through the county superintendent and the New Jersey Department of Education. So I don't have as much power to just do all of these wonderful things that we might, might think are great for all of our students. Unfortunately, I am bound by, um, you know, the, the state law and regulations by the New Jersey Department of Education. I will say that there is some legislation in the works by county superintendents, uh, myself included, to try to push for more robust offerings that will constitute a day of instruction, but we're not there yet.
I, I'm sorry, I'm terribly confused, okay? Maybe I'm an idiot here. We just did it for two weeks. So I, I'm confused, right? My kids were able to log on, go into the Zoom room, keep up with school. It wasn't logged as an absence. We weren't threatened with truancy court or loss of credit. We did that for the last two weeks. I presume, I would imagine, if we can do it for the last two weeks. What changed today, right? Did we get a letter from the governor or somebody, you know? Were we told we can't do it? Were there some lawyers that intervened? I mean, I'm, I'm confused. Why could we do it last week and not this week? Everyone's quiet. I, I, I don't understand.
I think, I think, Rob, this is, it is public comment. You have, you've had lots of opportunity to make that comment. It doesn't require a back and forth on the part of the board and the public. Um, some of your questions that you say haven't been answered, I, I know that you got them in an email today. I know you've had conversations. I know you're not satisfied with the answers and I respect.
I mean, I, I could read the email, that there weren't answers, okay?
But, but my point is, but the point is, you may not be getting the answers that you want to hear, but these are the answers that we have at this point.
This is no answer. This is no answer. Why is virtual instruction like we had on Friday allowed on Friday and not today on Monday? That's the simple question. I'm confused about it. I just heard Dr. Nikosia say, we're not allowed to do it, but we were allowed to do it for two weeks. So that's what I'm confused about. And that seems like something that we, the public, are entitled to an answer. Including all the people who have left this meeting because they weren't able to stay. All the people who've been messaging me, like, why won't they answer your questions, right? So why was the virtual instruction allowed on Friday and not on Monday?
Well, Christina, can you just clarify, for, for people that actually get COVID and, and have to stay home, do they get credit for those days that they have quarantine instruction?
Yes, the, the students that, the students that did, decided to self-quarantine use a code called QA quarantine instruction to, to signify, it's essentially that a, a parent excuse. But our board policy, um, does have a, a limited, uh, the 15 days that you can do a parent excused with notification.
And is it a board policy or a state policy?
That's a board policy.
No, Dr. Nikosia, you're, you're misleading everyone because I looked on my kids.
Let Chris finish, please.
Can I, i- if that's a board policy, then we can change that policy, is that correct?
I, I'd have to look into, uh, the, the state guidelines and regulations for that, but that's, we can open it for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
So, so just, just to be clear, okay? I've looked on my kids' record, right? Okay, those parent excuse days, they're like in yellow. I've seen them and on the parent excuse days, they're absent from school and no instructions provided, right? But then on all the days of the last two weeks, they logged on to Zoom. They got some instruction and they were marked in, uh, brown, a different code, um, that was excused. And those brown days for the last two weeks were not counted towards the 15, right? So there's really an important distinction here. The, the 15 is a little bit of a red herring when it comes to asking for, can we have another week? A little bit longer until the damn wave gets down, virtual instruction? Because those virtual instructions days are days that my kid gets some kind of education, right? And other people's kids get some kind of education, right? Which is what we're supposedly in the business of doing. And there's also not the punitive, it counts towards the 15 days, right? And so what I don't understand is, I mean, yeah, I just don't understand why we can't do this. I'm, maybe I'm stupid.
Okay, Rob, if there's more information that we can offer you, we will, we will offer it to you. We will, we will share that with you going forward. And that's the best thing I can say at this point so that we can wrap, wrap this up in case there's anybody else that wants to speak. If there's more that we can say, if you have more information to that question, then we'll answer it, we'll answer it for you.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about that at Policy Committee, you know, if that's, if that's, if the chair is willing to discuss it. I, I'd like to know more about the law on the policy and, you know. I mean, my understanding is we, you know, we're not really supposed to do it. We tried to like create a little opportunity to do it during these two weeks because people were, you know, legitimately really afraid, but in general, you know, we're supposed to do. So my impression was Christina was doing whatever she could to accommodate people who were afraid.
And I think it's not, I think it's going to be really challenging at any point when it stops, right? And I, it's, it's a hard thing to start and then just, and then to stop. But we gave people the opportunity, at least while it was at its worst, um, the, uh, COVID. Um, we have, do have one more, uh, person to speak. Uh, it's Sharon Rubin, but you want to, uh?
Hi. Hi, my name is Steve Rubin and I live at 66 South Adelaide Avenue. Uh, one of my sons graduated Highland Park High School a couple of years ago and I have another son who's a senior there right now. And I'm actually a 1983 graduate. So anyway, um, I just want to say that I know the board doesn't like to be questioned by Rob or others. But I just want to say that I fully support what Rob is saying. And I know there's a lot of people who are just frustrated with how he gets treated or other people get treated. And I think what he's saying really makes a lot of sense. So I would implore you to listen to him, be patient with him because he's a very smart guy.
Thank you. Thank you for your thoughts. If there are no further raised hands, and I don't see any, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time and effort and thank you to the public and, uh, we'll see you again in February.